Good evening and welcome to the May 1st, 2025, Meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Calabasas. Happy May Day, everybody. Meeting is called to order. And Commissioner Leah, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I'll be honored.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have a, we have a full complement of Commissioners here tonight, as well as the city attorney and staff. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Announcements and introductions. Commissioner Steiner, you have anything? Commissioner Harrison? Commissioner Housena? Commissioner Washburn?
Nothing.
Commissioner Leah?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to public comment. This is the portion of the meeting for those who wish to address the Commission on Matters that are not on the agenda. I don't have any speaker cards, other than for agendas, agendized items. Do we have anything? Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar. One is the meeting minutes from the meeting of April 17th, 2025. The other is the recommendation to adopt Resolution 2025-807, file number VAR 2025-001, consistent with the Planning Commission direction at our last meeting on April 17th, 2025. Do any of the Commissioners have any comments on that resolution? No? Okay, then do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar that includes both the minutes and that file?
I'll make the motion, but I want to add that the word EAVES is spelled E-A-V-E-S in the minutes, just to let you know in a couple of spots. But otherwise, the minutes are fine as well, so I move approval of the consent agenda.
With that, with that correction to the...
Right, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Both items on the consent calendar are...
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, who seconded that motion?
Commissioner Harrison. All right, moving on to public hearing items. Item number three on the agenda. This is a request for a development plan review, site plan review, oak tree permit and scenic corridor permit to construct a 1,959 square foot, single-family residence with attached-to-car garage on the vacant lot located at 23408 Valdez Road. And do we have, do we have a presentation?
We do. Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening Commissioners. Let me pull up my presentation. Okay, so first I want to mention that this project was noticed to all property owners within 500 feet of the subject site. The notice was also posted on the city's website and throughout the city at all required locations. Storypools were also installed on March 20th, 2025, as required per the city's story pole procedures. And staff has not received any public correspondence in regards to this project. And again, this is a request for a development plan review, a site plan review, an oak tree permit and a scenic corridor permit to construct a 1,959 square foot, single-family residence with attached-to-car garage on the vacant lot located at 23408 Valdez Road, APN number 2072030012. So the subject site is located within the Old Topanga area of the city. The property is located within the open space zoning district. I do want to make the distinction, this is not the OSDR zoning district, which is development restricted. This is just the OS open space zone, which does allow for development at a maximum density of one dwelling per lot. The site is also within the scenic corridor overlay zone, which is the yellow area shown in this map, due to the proximity of the site to Old Topanga Canyon Road, which is a designated scenic corridor. The project site is surrounded by vacant land on all four sides. To the north of the site is undeveloped land, zoned hillside mountainous, which is HM. To the east and to the south of the site is undeveloped land, zoned rural community within the Old Topanga overlay. And to the west is undeveloped land, zoned open space. However, although the lots are currently vacant, some of the lots in the vicinity, including the subject site, have been developed in the past. These structures have since been demolished. There are currently other developed properties along this segment of Valdez Road, in addition to one single family residence down the street, which has been approved by planning and is currently going through the building and safety plan check process to begin construction. However, that being said, there's no development on the lots immediately adjacent to the site currently. The site is a double frontage parcel, with the front lot line along Valdez Road and the rear lot line along Old Topanga Canyon Road. The site is currently vacant, although a previous residence dating back to 1942 and associated accessory structures on the site were demolished in 2014 for the purpose of correcting code enforcement violations on the property. As you can see in this image, the western and rear portions of the site are covered in oak trees and the area towards the front of the property and the primarily flat area along Valdez Road is where the previous residence and associated structures were located. The site is accessed off of Valdez Road. The mapped street Valdez does connect to Old Topanga to the west. However, the actual paved roadway is only paved up until about the western property line here. So the street effectively functions as a cul-de-sac. Old Topanga Canyon Road is also a designated historic roadway. However, Old Topanga is at approximately 30 feet higher in elevation than the front of the site and no improvements are proposed in this area along the rear property line. Therefore, no certificate of appropriateness or any review by our Historic Preservation Commission was needed since there are no impacts or alterations to that historic resource. Here you can see the site photographs. The photo on the left is the subject site as viewed from the front property line along Valdez Road. And the photo from the right is taken from the rear property line along Old Topanga Canyon Road, which is the designated scenic corridor. And again, storypools were installed on March 20th, 2025, as required for development within a scenic corridor per the city's story pole procedures. The project proposal includes construction of a new 1,959 square foot, one-story, single-family residence, 472 square foot attached garage and associated covered patios and porches. The project also involves encroachment into the protected zone of eight oak trees and removal of one 2.2-inch diameter coast live oak tree. And Calabasas Municipal Code Section 17.62.070 stipulates that development plan review permits require the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing and then make a recommendation to the city council with the final approval body being the city council. And a development plan review is required for this project because the project site is within the open space zoning district and the municipal code requires a development plan review permit in order to establish setbacks for all new projects within the OS zone. So here you can see the proposed site plan. The new one-story residence and garage are shown in blue on this slide. The proposed new driveway located off of Valdez Road is shown in yellow. The perimeter of the oak tree protected zone at the west and southern areas of the site is shown in green. Old Topanga is not served by a sewer line, so as with all the other homes on Valdez Road, the proposed residence is required to have a septic system. The septic system dispersal field area is shown in orange. It's at the lowest elevation of the site at the front of the lot. Other cross-hatched areas on the site, at the front, at the rear and on the side, are future dispersal field areas, which are potential locations to accommodate future expansion, as required by the municipal code. The diagonal lines in the northeast corner of the site plan, up here, are the Hammerhead Fire Turnaround Area. Again, because the street effectively functions as a cul-de-sac, since paving ends at about the western property line, there's no way for fire trucks to access, whoops, to access through to Old Topanga Canyon Road. Therefore, the onsite turnaround is required. I do also want to mention, as you can probably tell by the permit numbers, this project has been in process since 2019. I'm sure the applicant will elaborate on that. But a large portion of that time, I just want to mention, has been spent on the septic system. So a new septic system has to comply with Tier 1 standards of the state. So once their septic system was finally in compliance with those Tier 1 standards, then revisions were required for the project to the fire turnaround area. As a result of those modifications, revisions were required to the oak tree report. So then the oak tree report needed to be reviewed by their arborist and then re-reviewed by the city arborist. So there have been a couple changes to the project over the years. Again, a large portion of that was just due to the septic system, which I'm sure the applicant can speak to as well, but it has been in process the whole time. So because the subject site is within the open space zoning district, there are no minimum required setbacks. Per the municipal code, setbacks are established through the development plan review permit process, but in no case may the setbacks be less than the setbacks required for the RS zone. So the proposed rear setback for the project is 47 feet 8 inches. The proposed west side setback is 27 feet 4 inches. The east side setback is 25 feet 2 inches and the front setback is 36 feet 4 inches. The RS zone required setbacks are 20 feet, 10 feet, 10 feet and 20 feet, respectively. So all proposed setbacks are greater than the minimums of the RS zone. Additionally, there is no maximum FAR, maximum site coverage or minimum pervious surface percentage for the OS zoning district. However, the proposed FAR is 0.106, proposed site coverage is 14% and proposed pervious surface percentage is 80%. Here you can see the proposed floor plan. The residence is one-story, 1,959 square feet, with an attached garage of 472 square feet. So you can see the garage right here, front entry here, living room, dining room, kitchen, three bedrooms. And then we have a covered porch at the front and a covered patio at the rear. And then a screened trash and mechanical equipment area at the side of the residence at the rear. You can see the proposed roof plan. The roof is a pitched roof with dark gray asphalt jingles. Here you can see the proposed front northwest elevation and the rear southeast elevation. So the maximum height is 18 feet 9 inches at the front of the residence, because the grade is a little bit lower there. And at the rear of the residence, the proposed height is, I believe, 14 feet. The maximum height for the open space zoning district is 25 feet. And here you can see the side southwest elevation and the side northeast elevation. And here are the proposed renderings. On the left, we have the front of the residence as viewed from Valdez Road. And then the image on the right is the rear of the residence and this is as viewed from Old Topanga Canyon Road, the designated scenic corridor. Of course, in actuality, there are many oak trees in this area, so the property won't be able to view quite, won't be able to be viewed quite as clearly from the scenic corridor, but this is what the rear of the residence will look like. This is the colors and materials board. The colors and materials for the stucco, eaves and trim are listed in the image above. I do just want to point out that due to an error in the coloring of the renderings, the residence does appear to just be slightly more warm in tone in the renderings than it is. The actual stucco colors and trim colors are a little bit more cool tone, but the applicant has provided a physical colors and materials board, which we have for you somewhere, in order to demonstrate the true tone of the colors. The rendering is correct in regards to the massing of the residence and the architecture, just not the tone of the color. It's just a little bit cooler than in the image you see here. So the Architecture Review Panel reviewed the proposed project on August 3rd, 2019 and November 1st, 2019. The subject site is within the scenic corridor overlay zone due to the proximity of the site to Old Topanga Canyon Road. At the first meeting, the ARP made the design suggestions of utilizing clear story windows where appropriate, citing the house closer to the road and making the flat roof of the garage a usable deck space. And lastly, to return at a future meeting with a colors and materials board and a color rendering. At the second meeting, the applicant returned with a color rendering and a colors and materials board and a slightly revised design of the house, which eliminated the flat roof above the garage, which was originally proposed, and instead proposed a pitched roof above the garage, which matches the pitched roof on the remainder of the residence. Windows were also incorporated, per the ARP's suggestion. The applicant opted not to locate the house closer to the road due to other site constraints, including that onsite fire turnaround and the septic system placement and future dispersal fields, as mentioned in the site, site plan slide. Additional considerations from the ARP at the second meeting included minor modifications to the brick detail at the exterior of the house, which had been incorporated into the plan set. So the ARP found at the second meeting that the proposed project is compatible with the aesthetics of the surrounding neighborhood and recommended approval of the project to the Planning Commission and Council with those additional considerations. You can see the project's landscape plan. The conceptual landscape plan includes native grass around the perimeter of the house, the first five feet there, as well as native shrubs and trees, including Western Redbud, Toyon and Douglas Iris. Due to the fact that oak tree canopy covers approximately 25% of the subject site along the western side and rear portions of the lot, you can see that the landscaping kind of follows the edge of the oak tree drip line. So no landscaping is proposed within the areas of the site that are within the oak tree drip lines. And a final landscape plan will be submitted prior to issuance of building permits pursuant to condition number 15 with an Exhibit D in your packets. In regards to oak trees, one oak tree is proposed for removal. It's a 2.2-inch diameter tree, number 32, located right here on the site. At 2.2 inches, the tree is just above the threshold for protection, which is 2 inches. Mitigation measures for removal of the tree are outlined in the applicant-submitted oak tree report, which include onsite relocation of the 2.2-inch tree if possible or if not possible, an inch-for-inch replacement for mitigation. In addition to the one tree proposed for removal, there are eight oak trees proposed to have minor encroachments. So that's oak tree number OS13, OS14, number 1 and number 2 in the northwestern side yard area nearest to the driveway and oak trees number 4, 8, 9 and 10 in the southern part of the property at the rear of the house. There are a total of 36 oak trees inventoried by the oak tree report and the remainder of those trees, which is 18 onsite and 18 offsite, will remain with no proposed impacts. So home sizes in the vicinity range from 692 square feet to 2,740 square feet. And lot sizes range from approximately 7,144 square feet to 21,803 square feet. The average home size in the vicinity is 1,720 square feet. The average lot size is 9,939 square feet. The proposed residence will be 1,959 square feet in total and the lot size is 18,542 square feet. Surrounding homes are a mix of one and two-story, single-family residences. I just want to mention this information on the slide comes from the home comparison table within the technical appendix in the staff report, which looked at homes within a 500-foot radius of the subject site. 300-foot is typically our standard for the home size comparison, but in this case, we expanded the search to 500 feet in order to obtain a large enough sample size, since the area is a little bit more sparsely populated. So at 500 feet, that came up with a total of 11 homes for the comparison. And that data came from the LA County Assessor and does not include garages. These are just some photos of the surrounding homes. As mentioned, the sites immediately adjacent to the subject site are vacant, so these are just some photos of the nearest adjacent homes a little bit further down along Valdez Road. As you can see from these photos, the residences are primarily two-story in a variety of colors and architectural styles. So the applicant is requesting a development plan review permit, a site plan review permit, a scenic corridor permit and an oak tree permit. The applicant has provided written responses to the findings required per these code sections listed on the slide and their written responses are included in your packets as Exhibit B. So staff concludes that the proposed single-family residence is in allowed use in the open space zoning district, that the proposed project conforms to the development standards of the OS zone and that compliance is documented within the written staff report. Next, home sizes in the neighborhood range in size from 692 square feet to 2,740 square feet and the proposed residence will be 1,959 square feet. The ARP also recommended approval of the project. Lastly, the project is exempt from secret review pursuant to Section 15061, general rule exemption, and 15303, new construction of the California Secret Guidelines. So the recommended action is that the commission direct staff to prepare a resolution recommending approval of the project and associated applications to the city council or direct staff to prepare a resolution recommending denial of the project and associated applications to the city council for file numbers DPR-2019-001, BL190492, BL1901497 and BL1901494, inclusive of all required findings to support the resolution. And staff is prepared to assist the commission in developing findings for recommending approval or denial as required. Thank you, and I am available for questions. And we also do have the owners and the applicant here available for questions as well.
Great, thank you very much, Jaclyn. Thorough presentation. And I do want to stress to my fellow Commissioners that our recommendation, what we will be doing today is a recommendation of approval or disapproval to the city council. It is not a, it is not a final decision, okay? All right, before I, before I open the public hearing, does anyone have any questions of staff? Nope, nope. All right. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I do have two speaker cards, one from the owner and one from the designer of the project. They both appear to be for the purpose of answering questions, not, not a presentation of any kind. Is that correct? Okay. Does anyone have questions of the owner or the designer? Yep. Okay. Who would like to, we do have, we do have some questions up here, so who wants to come up first? I have Christine Ochoa and I have Laura Hansen. Who wants, who wants to step into the fire first?
Not that bad.
Please state your name and city of residence.
Yes, good evening, my name is Laura Hansen and I currently reside in Cambria, California.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Harrison, since you're the one with the questions...
Thank you for coming, thank you for all, for doing all of this and I, I'm sorry that the applicant had to spend so many years going through this process.
It's been...
But the result is really nice. But I have a couple of questions on the architecture.
Sure.
The Architectural Review Panel suggested clear story windows, but I don't see any. I mean, what was, what did you do in response to that?
I believe there are some cathedrals, ceiling windows above the living dining space that go out toward the trellis or the covered patio.
Oh, and that's in the backyard, right?
In the back, yeah.
So, so, so my question is on the front?
Uh huh.
And by the way, this is just a suggestion.
Sure.
And maybe just my opinion, nobody else cares, but if you look on Slide 11, for example, although I have the, I have the architectural page two, A dash 2.04, the living room is the room that projects out in front?
No, actually, it's the reverse. The living room is the back of the house and the, or sorry, 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 sorry. No, the dining room, don't mind me. The dining room is towards the back and the living room is towards the front, yes.
Right, no, I looked at the plans. So the living rooms, so, so either way, it's, it's like projecting in front and, and it's, I, I wish it would look a little more important in some way and I don't... So I mean, just to throw out ideas, and I don't know if you're willing to do anything...
Sure.
Either like a window box or a black wrought iron, something there, or even brick on the bottom, it could be the same color as the wall.
Okay.
Or, or, you know, just, or black molding that matches the, the, the garage, you know, just something to accentuate that a little bit. Because that's the very front, that's, that, that's important.
I think, I think too, with the clear story windows, we were a little worried about increasing the height because we were trying to stay as low as possible in like California ranch kind of vibe. So we weren't trying to make something grandiose, we're just trying to be very simple.
Right, and I don't even see how much room there is for that, in that, in the front there anyway, for, for a clear story window.
Well, I mean, if we were to raise the plate height of that projection of the living room...
Yeah, but I wouldn't do that.
But, but that's gonna, that's gonna raise the height and again, we're trying to be as conservative as possible, so we get your approval.
All right, so just suggestion to sort of accentuate, make that look more important because that's the front of your, uh, front of the house and...
Sure.
It doesn't have to be incorporated in plans because they could, you could do this...
Right, right.
Afterwards, but just something to make that look like this is the front.
Sure.
That's all.
And we do, we do have the veneer around the front entrance, the covered entrance there.
So I couldn't tell, where do you, I, I couldn't tell on these plans, is there a brick veneer?
The recess of the front door that calls out the, the, the brick veneer in the, around the front door.
Oh, okay, so even, and, and it's painted the same color?
If you look at the colored renderings, it's, I believe, a little shade darker than the house color, the body color.
So if you had like a, a row of brick at the bottom of that living room...
Yeah.
A wall, that would do the same, that would be, that would do it.
Absolutely, I'm more than happy to add that.
Okay, thank you. That's all, thank you, and this is very nice and...
All right.
Any more questions?
Do we have any more questions? Yes, Commissioner Washburn?
I agree with my fellow Commissioner. It's a lot of work that you guys did.
Thank you.
And nicely done. I have a couple of questions that might involve a staff comment as well. The septic system in place, my recollection is that when we had the Old Topanga Canyon, you know, I guess wastewater treatment, there were really wars at the time, I have to tell you that. But ultimately, I think we settled on having an onsite waste treatment center or system, you know, not as a requirement, but as a, as a solution along with the existing septics and we needed to get rid of a, a number of, of literally cesspools that were in the canyon. So at this point, I, I see that there's adequate preparation for the treatment or the wastewater, but is it in fact a straightforward septic system or is it in fact a little more sophisticated? I have no idea.
I believe, and I'm not the septic engineer, so I will default to the reports that staff may have on file to answer this question, but I believe it is an advanced system, possibly even a tertiary system, but don't quote me on that.
Well, does staff have, you know, I may have missed it in the, in the presentation.
The minimum requirement's gotta be a Tier 1 system.
Okay.
So whether or not this one's a, and I don't want to say simple Tier 1, but a Tier 1 system or some kind of advanced system, I'm not 100% sure. But it's, it's a very stringent requirement now.
And the Tier 1 is also relatively new. I think in the past couple of years is just when the code changed. So the, I'm assuming all of the other homes along Valdez Road do not have septic systems built to these same standards as current requirements are.
Well, and...
And they've already been approved in terms of the septic system. It's already been submitted.
It goes through building and safety for review, just so that we know that it's feasible before Planning Commission, but I believe building and safety will have to look at it one more time once the project is submitted for building plan check, but...
And they work in concert with the Regional Water Quality Control Board to get those systems permitted?
They do have, I believe, conceptual approval of the septic system.
Yeah, we've definitely been working with city staff on the septic system and they've been involved in all of these changes and so every change we've made has been with their recommendations so that we can get approval.
My comments are, my comments are not a complaint or a constraint either. There's adequate space and I'm sure there's adequate awareness of what's necessary to be done there. But anything we can do to improve the handling of the issues of basically runoff water and infiltration water, that's all well and, well and good and I'm guessing that you're happy to do whatever's necessary to meet the appropriate standards.
Absolutely, I mean, if it means gray water systems as well, we're open to that.
Well, it, it might be something to evaluate upfront just to help, you know, in developing the, I guess, the cost profile of dealing with all of these kinds of improvements. I had one other question about the potential future improvements. I, I don't see any provision for solar panels, not that it's required necessarily, but are there plans of the, of the folks to eventually try to deal with providing?
That wasn't one of the requirements at this time. Generally speaking, homes built in California are usually solar-ready, but it's usually not mandated that you install the solar panels, so...
And I'm, again, I'm not complaining or insisting or...
Right.
Whatever, I'm just saying that in anticipating that stuff, it's best to deal with those issues upfront.
Well, I think with the pitched roofs we have and the orientation we have and a lot of sunlight on the site, there would be plenty of, of square footage for future solar panels.
Looks like it to me too. And if they have an electric vehicle, you know, it'd be nice to be able to help, you know, support their future uses and so, and so on. I have one other comment and it's, again, just a thought because I've been around an awful long time here and among the things that have happened in our community is that the whole Santa Monica Mountains region has had a significant reduction in what we call white oak or Quercus lobata trees. And if there is a need to replace a tree, there are so many Quercus agrif, I mean, yeah, agrofolias on the property which are being well-maintained and sustained, in fact, on the property. But if there's a need to replace a tree, I, I would just... the property, but if there's a need to replace a tree, I, I would just ask that you consider, you know, the owners consider planting a Quercus lobata. It's a lovely tree, number one, and anything we can do to promote that kind of thing. Again, not a requirement, it's just a suggestion if you have to make any changes. It's just a, a good idea to take a look at, you know, the greater environmental needs as well, which clearly in all the planning that you've done is already well considered. It's just that not too many people are aware of the fact that we've lost a lot of white oaks or, you know, Quercus lobata trees and they're deciduous. So if in fact, you know, there's an issue of placement, it could be that if there is solar panels or other kinds of equipment to deal with that, the fact that they're deciduous, you know, it gives you sunlight in the, in the darker seasons of the year as well.
Okay. Thank you for that recommendation.
But otherwise, you know, it's very well, you know, put together. Thank you for working so hard, the bunch of you, you know, or to make it happen and staff, of course.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Leah.
My question is not for the applicant, it's for the chair or the commission or staff.
Okay. Then let's, thank you, Ms. Hanson.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for your consideration.
Ms. Ochoa, did you want to speak or is, if there are no questions of you, you're, you're good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Then I'm going to close the public hearing and Commissioner Leah.
Yes. The resolution will be coming back to us with the council.
Our, well, what will hap?
Sorry.
Go ahead. You're, you're the ones doing it, so I'll let you answer.
Commissioner Leah, so if the commission was to recommend that staff come back with a resolution, that resolution recommending approval would come back to the planning commission first and if you vote to accept that resolution, then that resolution recommending approval would be sent to the council. So it would come back to the commission a second time before then going to the city council for a final decision.
Okay. With that in mind, on the findings in Exhibit B, it says in two places that they're in compliance with CEQA. They're not in compliance with CEQA. They're exempt from CEQA. And if it's coming back to us, we can correct that.
Well, we can, we can, we can correct it with the resolution tonight so that it comes back correct.
Yes, the findings in Exhibit B were submitted by the applicant, so.
I understand that, that's why I.
Yes, staff will.
I'm raising it and want to have to correct it at the next meeting.
If you want to point out to staff, I see that item number three says that it is exempt from CEQA.
Well, both item threes on the two sections, the first page and then item three on the second page.
If I may, and this could help, CEQA is a determination, an exemption, that a project is exempt from CEQA means it is in compliance with CEQA.
No.
It just does not warrant further CEQA review.
If you're exempt, you're not in compliance. You do not have to comply.
Commissioner Leah, the language that I think you're looking at actually, that comes from our municipal code, so that's how the finding is worded in our municipal code and what's in italics is directly from the code and then the paragraph below it is the response. So in the, in the response, they do state the project is exempt from CEQA, but the language that says the proposed use is in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act does come right from the code.
Yeah, we probably should correct the code then, at some point.
Well, that.
Because it is not, it is not correct.
You may very well be right, but that is not before us tonight, so.
Understood.
Okay. Anything else? Anything further? Do we have, do we have a motion?
I'll move that we ask the staff to develop a resolution of approval to send to the council with the comments considered. Obviously, there's nothing that we're asking.
No requirements, but.
That they're, they're gonna have to require.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Before we vote, I do have a question within discussion. There was a, there was a, an alternative with regard to the slightly beyond the threshold on the, on the oak tree. Do we need to, in our recommendation to council, do we need to choose one of them or can we leave it as an alternative?
I believe the way that that's worded of the applicant submitted oak tree report is that it's up to the arborist if that can be feasible when they actually start the process of trying to remove the oak tree. My understanding is that for larger oak trees, they're more susceptible to failure when they're relocated, but since this is only a 2.2 inch diameter oak tree, it could be possible to relocate. So I believe the way it's worded in the report is that's something that the arborist will evaluate at the time that that tree is actually taken out of the ground, if it's possible to just move it over a little.
Thank you. Best to leave it up to them onsite. All right. So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none? I, this is, this is, this is approved and we're asking staff to come back with a recommendation for approval of the project, recommendation to city council. Okay? Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. It's not, nothing is official yet. It has to go to, it has to come back to us, as you heard, it comes back to us for actual approval and then on to city council. Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you've done and your patience in going through this long journey.
Okay.
By the way, Dennis Marvin used to call that Quercus lobata.
In honor of.
Let us move on to, give me one second. I believe it's item number four. That is file number SPR 2023-004, OTP 2023006, LTM 2024002, SCP 2023002, SGNP 2023-001 and SGN 2023-030. This is a request for a site plan review, oak tree permit, lot merger, scenic corridor permit, sign program and sign permit for construction of a new two-story retail automobile dealership for Kia inclusive of a 45,780 square foot car dealership and a 2,117 square foot car wash facility. The subject site is a vacant property previously occupied by Spurling Nursery at 24460 Calabasas Row. And again, this will be a determination of recommending for or against to the city council. Jaclyn, you have a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Chair Posberg.
Thank you.
Let me pull that up. Okay. Good evening again, commissioners. I do want to mention that this project was noticed to all property owners within 500 feet of the subject site. The public hearing notice was also posted on the city's website and throughout the city at all required locations. Staff did receive public correspondence, which is before you tonight, as well as included in your packets as Exhibit S. Public comments received on the environmental document are also included within Exhibit J. Story poles were also installed on the project site on July 29th, 2024, in accordance with the city's story pole procedures and have been up since then. I also want to mention this project was originally noticed and scheduled for the December 19th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Following comments that were raised during the draft IS/MND circulation period, the applicant elected to temporarily pause the application in order to try to address those comments. At the public hearing on December 19th, the commission received public comment and then continued the item to a future meeting, date uncertain. Therefore, public hearing notices were sent out again ahead of tonight's meeting since the, at the December 19th meeting, it was continued to a date uncertain. And again, this is a request for a site plan review, oak tree permit, lot merger, scenic corridor permit, sign program and sign permit for construction of a new two-story retail auto dealership for Kia inclusive of a 45,780 square foot dealership and a 2,117 square foot car wash facility. So this image shows an aerial view looking southwest. You can see the existing Cadillac dealership on the left side of this image, the existing BMW dealership on the right side of this image, and in the background at the top of this ridgeline here are the West Ridge HOA on the left and the Vista Point HOA on the right. In the middle is the rendering of the proposed Kia dealership, which we'll elaborate on in the next slides, but just wanted to orient the commission on this title slide rendering. So the project is located within the commercial limited CL zoning district within the commercial auto retailer car overlay zone and the scenic corridor overlay zone due to the proximity of the site to the 101 freeway, which is a designated scenic corridor. The site is on the south side of Calabasas Road between Muro, Muro Road to the west and Parkway Calabasas to the east. The property to the north on the other side of Calabasas Road is zoned CB, commercial business, and it's developed with a vehicle storage lot. The properties to the west are zoned OSDR, CL and CR and are developed with auto dealerships and those are unimproved within the OSDR portions of the lot. Properties to the east are zoned CL, CR, which is commercial retail, public facilities and OSDR and include another auto dealership, a vacant parcel, LA County Fire Station 68 and a mixed-use medical clinic slash multifamily residence building. Properties to the south are zoned OSDR and RS and include undeveloped open space and single-family residences. So, and in this enlarged aerial view, you can see the subject site, which is outlined in green, the adjacent BMW dealership to the west, vehicle storage lot and the Cadillac dealership to the east. The subject property is comprised of two parcels in an irregular shape with a total gross lot area of 476,553 square feet, which is 10.94 acres in total, and a net lot area of 439,766 square feet, 10.10 acres, and that is exclusive of easements which limit the use of the lot. The project site is currently vacant, but the northern portions of the property, as you can see here, are improved with the remnants of the prior use that occupied the site, which was Spurling Nursery, which operated from 1973 to 2015. The commercial structures associated with the business have since been demolished. However, the site contains remnant paved areas, foundations, retaining walls and graded pads associated with the former plant nursery. As you can see in the aerial view, the southern portions of the site, where my cursor is, beyond the area developed and utilized by Spurling Nursery are undeveloped with much of this site area being steeply sloped. There is a total elevation change of approximately 160 feet from the lowest point at the front property line to the highest point at the rear property line and the area in the southern portions of the lot is covered with oak trees. The northern area of the site is the flattest portion of the site with the least oak trees and other natural resources. And just for a little bit of background on the site, this slide shows an aerial view from our GIS system in 2007. So in this image from 2007, you can see the extent of the previous Spurling Nursery development. The developed area is concentrated towards the front of the lot. You can see cars and temporary structures here, but paving, parking and other structures do extend towards the middle, towards the southern portions of the lot. So in these areas, you can see cars here, some cars along here, extending along the middle portions of the property. And here you can see photographs of the site. The photo on the left was taken from about where the front property line will be, following the right-of-way dedication, so you can see the story poles that mark the outline of the building right here. This photo on the right is taken from across the street from that inventory lot on the other side of Calabasas Road. And in this image, you can see the story poles in the distance as well. This is a utility line right here, so those are not the story poles. You can see the orange right here where my cursor is. And those story poles were installed on July 29th, 2024 as required per the city's story pole procedures. So the project proposal includes construction of a new 45,780 square foot two-story car dealership for Kia and associated 2,117 square foot one-story car wash facility. And an auto dealership is a permitted land use in the CL zoning district and car overlay zone. The project involves removal of three oak trees, including one heritage oak tree and encroachment into the protected zone of 21 oak trees. The project also includes onsite signage, the merging of two lots, a right-of-way dedication and associated frontage improvements, which include an extended shared center lane and a dedicated curbside vehicle inventory unloading area. There are six applications requested as part of this project, a site plan review for the construction of the 45,780 square foot dealership building and construction of the 2,117 square foot car wash facility, an oak tree permit for the removal of three oak trees, including one heritage oak tree, an encroachment into the protected zone of 21 oak trees in association with the construction of the dealership, a lot merger for the merger of the .61 acre parcel A and the 10.33 acre parcel B into the resulting proposed 10.94 acre parcel I. Both existing parcels are under common ownership and are within the same zoning district and land use designation. A scenic corridor permit is requested because the development is located within the city designated 101 freeway scenic corridor. And lastly, a sign program and sign permit are requested for the new signage associated with the dealership. Moving on to review authority, per Section 17.32.010 subsection D4 of the municipal code, removal of any living heritage oak tree requires a planning commission recommendation be forwarded to the city council for their consideration. Additionally, per Section 17.30.080 subsection B3 of the municipal code, monument signage within the Calabasas Road District up to 25 feet in height and over 100 feet up to 150 square feet in area may be approved by the council following review by the planning commission. So for these two reasons, per Section 17.60.020 of the municipal code, the final review authority for all of the six associated applications is the city council. Here you can see the overall site plan, which depicts the entirety of the property. As shown, the proposed development is concentrated within the northern areas of the site and the areas that were previously utilized by Spurling Nursery. The southern portion of the site, which is everything shown in gray, will not be altered as part of the project. As previously mentioned, the southern areas of the site are more steeply sloped and contain many oak trees. As depicted on the site plan, the site also contains easements for pipelines, telephone poles and drainage features and those are highlighted in orange here. So you can see the dealership and car wash facility in blue, the limits of grading and paved areas in brown, and a gravel parking lot and existing paved parking area that was previously utilized by Spurling Nursery here. And in this enlarged site plan, you can see the proposed improvements in greater detail. The main dealership building will be two-story and 45,780 square feet in total. I do want to mention the gross floor area is significantly lower at 33,737 square feet since the gross floor area excludes the non-functional areas of the building such as parking, which I'll explain further on the floor plan slide. A detached 2,117 square foot car wash facility will also be at the rear of the building here. The site is also improved with a parking area and a drive aisle at the front of the building. The drive aisle will run along the western side of the building, which leads to more parking at the rear, inventory areas, a trash enclosure area and an onsite hammerhead fire turnaround between the dealership and the car wash at the rear of the site. The dealership is set back 58 feet, seven inches from the front property line, 20 feet minimum is required, 7 feet, 2 inches from the east side property line, 0 feet minimum is required, 31 feet, 8 inches from the west side property line, 0 feet minimum is required, and 776 feet, 11 inches from the rear property line, again, 0 feet minimum is required. The proposed site coverage is 5.69%, 72% is the maximum, and the proposed pervia surface is 84.9%. I want to mention that's about the same as the existing condition since the site is already paved from the prior Spurling Nursery use, and 22% is the minimum required for pervia surfaces. The proposed FAR is 0.08 and .20 is the maximum allowed. So in this slide, you can see the floor plans, the first floor plan on the left and the second floor plan on the right. The first floor is a total floor area of 22,890 square feet and a gross floor area of 20,838 square feet. You can see on the first floor plan, the service and parts department is the area shown in yellow and at the very front of the building, highlighted in blue, is the lobby and elevator to access the showrooms and offices, so this is the only area for basically customers that arrive to the site will come in the front door here, go up this elevator and come up this elevator right here on the second floor and the dealership and showroom offices, which are shown in blue. The remainder of the second floor is customer and inventory parking, which is shown in red. So for the second floor, the total floor area is 22,890 square feet, the gross floor area is 10,782 square feet. So the municipal code defines gross floor area as all functional and habitable floors and of structures, which excludes the open parking area on the second floor, which is for customer and inventory parking. Here you have the roof plan. You can see shaded in the grayish blue here, the outline of the solar carport. the outline of the solar carport canopy above, which is required per building code. And then in dark gray here, the ramp from the second floor up to the rooftop parking area. You can also see the stair tower at the rear and at the side, and the elevator tower at the front. And the stair towers and elevator tower will all project above the roof line, which you'll see on the elevations. All rooftop mechanical equipment, which is located adjacent to the stair towers, will be screened from view by the stair towers and parapets. And you can also see on the roof, we have parking. We have employee and vehicle inventory parking areas. Here we have the car wash facility, which will be two thousand one hundred and seventeen square feet and one-story with a max height of eighteen feet. The structure will have a flat roof, and the exterior will be block painted Coventry Gray. These are the elevations for the front north side of the building and rear south side of the building. Colors and materials are depicted on exhibit B in your packets. The front elevation will have exterior storefront glazing, black bands at the top of the second floor and top of the first floor, which are comprised of aluminum composite panels, and exterior insulated finish system in the color Coventry Gray. At the rear of the building, you can see the proposed rooftop solar carport, just for the purpose of compliance with building code requirements regarding solar panels for new commercial projects. You can also see at the rear elevation, due to the changing grade, the building is effectively one-story at the rear. So this ramp up to the roof begins at the second floor up to the top of the roof. You can also see the entrance to the second floor parking area right here, which again is at grade at the rear of the building. You can also see the trash area right here in the rear elevation. We have the west side elevation here and the east side elevation here. The sides of the dealership will be in the same color, exterior insulated finish system in the color Coventry Gray, as well as block painted Coventry Gray on the eastern side, this area here, and the ramp up to the roof. Side elevations also show the open areas, these darker gray squares on the side, which is where the second floor parking area is located. The stair towers and the elevator tower, as well as the solar carport, you can see these projecting above the roof line on this slide. And on the west side elevation, you can see the drive aisle that leads up to the rear of the building. The east side elevation, this is a pedestrian walkway only, so you can see the steps down for the pedestrian access, and this is a five-foot-wide path between the building and the property line. These are the cross-sections. In this first image, this top cross-section cuts the building in half from north to south. So my cursor is on the left side is the front of the building. On the right side is the rear of the building. This brown dashed line here is the proposed new grade, so you can see the building is cut into the hillside. The green dashed line is the existing grade, and the blue dashed line is the thirty-five-foot max height line, which is thirty-five feet above existing or finished grade, whichever is lower. And this max height line excludes architectural feature projections, such as the stair towers and the elevator penthouse per the municipal code, but it does apply to accessory structures such as that solar carport. So as you can see in this image, that solar carport is within that thirty-five-feet max height line. And this bottom site cross-section, this again is north-south, you can see the total elevation gain is approximately a hundred and sixty feet from the lowest point at the front property line to the highest point at the rear property line. As shown on the site cross-section, the dealership is located at the lowest and flattest area at the front of the site, and this dashed line is the existing grade. Here we have the project rendering. I do just want to mention on this slide that this is the correct rendering, which is in exhibit A in your packets. The rendering within exhibit J, which is the environmental document, there's a version that just doesn't show the most recent change to the monument sign, which relocated it from the west side of the driveway to the east side of the driveway, which I'll discuss further in the signage slide, but I just wanted to point out that this is the correct version of the rendering with the monument sign on the east side of the driveway. And in this slide, you can see the surrounding car dealerships. First, we have Audi, which is further down Calabasas Road to the west, BMW, which is directly adjacent to the west, Cadillac, which is adjacent to the east, and Mercedes, which is further down Calabasas Road to the east. You can see from these photos that all the dealerships share similar design elements. Many of them are more modern in architectural style, and white, black, silver, and gray are common colors for the designs. So in regards to design and ARP, the ARP reviewed the proposed project on July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. The subject site is within the scenic corridor overlay zone, due to the proximity of the site to the 101 freeway, and the site's also within the west Calabasas Road master plan area. The intent of the scenic corridor is to prevent destruction of natural beauty and the environment and to protect aesthetic value of the scenic corridor by preserving views of hillsides and mountains from the scenic corridor. Scenic corridor design policies include the following: All structures within the scenic corridor shall avoid large, straight, blank facades, and all structures shall be designed and situated on sites to minimize adversely impacting views. Since the site is also within the west Calabasas Road master plan, the master plan encourages balance between the city's design goals for the area and the corporate design of the dealerships. Design guidelines for the master plan include the following: Buildings to use high-quality and authentic materials. Each building should reflect a single architectural style. Use of common design elements and features for the entire building. And that landscaping should use a mix of trees, shrubs, and ground cover, and use native or drought-tolerant plants. So the ARP reviewed the proposed project for consistency with the scenic corridor design guidelines and with the master plan, and provided the following suggestions: To consider using black banding on the fascia beneath the showroom floor and wrapping it around the building, similar to the band beneath the parapet. And to consider using smooth trowel finish or other quality materials on retaining walls along the sidewalk area. Revisions can be seen on the rendering in prior slides. Let me just go back and show that. So you can see this black band wraps around the building at the top of the building and also between the two floors. Originally was only proposed at the top of the building, so for the purpose of symmetry, the ARP had recommending, recommended adding it here as well between the two floors. So as you can see from the rendering, that has been incorporated. And so the ARP found that the proposed project is compatible with the aesthetics of the surroundings and recommended approval of the project to the planning commission and council with suggestions that the applicant has since revised the plans to address. In regards to landscaping, the proposed tree planting plan is shown on the left-hand side here. It includes a total of seventeen coastlive oak trees in varying container sizes in order to mitigate for three oak trees, sixty-four inches total in diameter, which are to be removed. These mitigation oak trees will be planted behind the building, this symbol right here, so you can see those behind the building, adjacent to the existing oak trees in the southern portions of the site. So it extends toward this undeveloped area in the southern area of the site here. The shrub plan, which is shown on the right, depicts areas where shrubs will be planted along the west property line, along the front property line, within landscaped planters along the rear drive aisle, these little green areas you can see here, and in this area, which is the area to be graded behind the drive aisle at the rear of the building. Landscaping will be a combination of native and drought-tolerant plants. If you can see this water use table, this chart right here, all proposed shrubs are either low or very low water usage. And final, MLLO-compliant landscape plans will be submitted prior to issuance of a building permit per the draft project conditions of approval included in your packets. In regards to oak trees, a total of fifty-four oak trees, including four off-property trees, were addressed with an oak tree report. Protected zones of those trees are shaded in green on this image here. Although I do want to point out, this is just a small portion of the many oak trees that exist on site. The entirety of the property was not surveyed, since the trees on the hillside in the southern portions of the lot, in the areas where my cursor is here, are outside of the areas where potential impacts could occur. There are three coastlive oak trees, trees number 101, 102, and 150, that are proposed for removal. Of the three trees proposed for removal, one tree, tree number 102, is a heritage oak tree with a diameter of forty-six inches, diameter at breast height, which is four and a half feet above grade. That tree requires removal due to its location along the eastern property line. The trunk is located approximately two feet away from the footprint of the proposed building. The other two trees are non-heritage trees with diameters at breast height of seven inches, tree number 101, and eleven inches, tree number 150. Both of those trees are located within the excavation areas for the proposed project retaining walls along the eastern and western boundaries. Additionally, twenty-one oak trees will be encroached upon as a result of the project construction. A full analysis of impacts for each tree is included within the applicant-submitted oak tree report, which is exhibit G. Of those twenty-one oak trees, nineteen are expected to experience no long-term adverse impacts. However, encroachments for two of the trees will be extensive, which is tree number 116, which is a heritage tree, and tree number 149, which are circled in red. These trees may be harmed as a result of construction. However, it is the opinion of the project arborist that if the recommendations in the report are followed, these trees, as well as all other encroached-upon trees, should recover. Mitigation measures and recommendations are contained within the submitted oak tree report, which include a five-year monitoring period and an inch-for-inch replacement if any encroached-upon trees die as a result of construction impacts. So in regards to signage, the sign program shows five building-mounted signs, as were depicted in the elevations on previous slides. First, we have sign number two, which is Kia at the front of the building, which is fifty-two square feet. Then we have the franchisee sign Hello at the front of the building, which is twenty-seven square feet. We have a sign for Delivery, which is sign number four, six square feet at the front of the building. And then on the west side of the building, we have sign number five, which is a secondary sign for Kia, and sign number six, which is a service entrance sign, which is twelve square feet. And all signs are within the allowable dimensions per the municipal code, with a total area of a hundred and twenty-five square feet for all building-mounted signs combined, since the municipal code requires the total sign area to be less than the linear length of dealership frontage, which is a hundred and twenty-seven feet in length. One monument sign is also proposed, which is sign number one, shown here. This was originally proposed at the west side of the driveway, adjacent to the property line. After concerns arose regarding sightlines between the two driveways, the applicant relocated the monument sign to the east side of the driveway. And you can see this little visibility triangle right here to show that the sign is fifteen feet away from the edge of the sidewalk. The proposed monument sign is twenty feet in height and a hundred and five square feet. And for some context, sign area is defined per the municipal code as the area in square feet determined by drawing a line around the perimeter of the writing and background, which is used to differentiate the sign from the structure on which it is placed. So the hundred and five square foot area is the lettering and black background, and doesn't include the silver support structure that it is mounted to. Per Section seventeen point thirty point zero-eight-zero subsection B three of the municipal code, a monument sign within the Calabasas Road District over a hundred square feet and up to a max of a hundred and fifty square feet may be approved by the city council upon finding that the increased sign area is necessary to allow the applicant visibility comparable to that enjoyed by a substantial number of other properties, including the BMW dealership and Audi dealership in the Calabasas Road District. Therefore, because the sign area is a hundred and five square feet, the proposed project requires review by the planning commission with a final decision by the city council. So in regards to parking, the municipal code requires one parking space per forty-five square feet of showroom, which is twenty-eight spaces for this project, one parking space per five hundred square feet of service area, which is forty-one spaces for this project, one parking space per two hundred square feet of parts area, which is seven spaces, and one parking space per two thousand square feet of outdoor display area, which is one parking space, for a total of seventy-seven parking spaces. And the municipal code does not require inventory parking spaces, and the municipal code also does not differentiate between the number of spaces for customers or the number of spaces for employees. The applicant is proposing seventy-seven parking spaces, thirty-nine for customers and thirty-eight for employees, which complies with the seventy-seven minimum. And they're also proposing eighty-four spaces for display and inventory, and again, none are required under the municipal code. You can see their parking diagrams from their plans here on their site plan. You can see parking for customers and display area at the front of the site, parking for customers and inventory at the rear of the building, as well as inventory in those paved areas and the areas of the site previously used by Spurling Nursery, shown in blue here. On their second floor, you can see customer and inventory parking in that parking area on the second floor. And then on the roof is where all the employee parking will be located, as well as inventory spaces on the second floor. So in regards to driveway location and access, concerns regarding the proposed driveway location were submitted by the adjacent property owner to the west, which is BMW, both as comments to the project's draft initial study slash M and D and at the December ninth planning commission hearing as verbal testimony. The applicant paused the project to try to work through those concerns, which is why that original December nineteenth public hearing was continued. Since then, staff has participated in several meetings with the applicant, as well as with the owners of BMW, seeking to address and resolve the concerns that have been raised. While ultimately, both parties were not able to come to a resolution on the issues raised, the applicant has proposed two changes to their project. The first is a relocation of the monument sign from the western side of the driveway in its original location to the eastern side of the driveway here, in order to try to alleviate some concerns about the sign possibly blocking sightlines. And the second potential change was a possible alternate driveway location, which is included in your packets as exhibit N, shown here, which depicts the driveway shifted nine feet further to the east, which provides a twenty-foot separation between the driveways, as opposed to the eleven-foot separation currently proposed. This alternate driveway location would result in the loss of one parking space, as shown, but it would not require any alterations to the ADA path, as shown in this image, the display area, the retaining walls, and the electrical and utility locations in the front of the site. I'm sure the applicant can expand on this more in their comments to the commission. Concerns regarding the proposed driveway have also been analyzed by the city's public works department and by Associated Transportation Engineers, ETE, which is a subconsultant of the city's environmental consultant. And both of those memos are provided as exhibit O and exhibit P within your packets. So in regards to frontage improvements, the project also involves a right-of-way dedication to align the front of the project site with the existing sidewalk in front of the BMW dealership, since the front property lines of this property and the adjacent lot to the west are not currently aligned, which prevents a sidewalk connection. By dedicating the first approximately twenty feet of parcel A to the city, there is sufficient room to accommodate a two-way left-turn lane, as shown here, into the front of this property, to extend the sidewalk in front of the property, and to accommodate a bike lane, extending the center lane from its current end point farther west on Calabasas Road, which you can kind of see where my cursor is here, is about the current end point of that center lane. So that will provide for safer turning in and out of BMW's adjacent secondary driveway, as well as for left turns in and out of the proposed Kia driveway. And currently, this adjacent driveway does not benefit from a left-turn lane. As shown in red right here above, an eight-foot no-parking zone will be adjacent to the driveway within approximately seventy-five-foot loading zone area next to it, which will be utilized for vehicle unloading and unloading, as well as for inventory trucks when new inventory vehicles are dropped off. I do want to mention that if the alternate driveway location, as mentioned in the previous slide, is pursued, then this loading zone area would be shortened by nine feet. So in regards to traffic and transportation, there is an expected estimate of one thousand three hundred and thirty-five trips per day generated as a result of this project, which is eighty-nine AM peak hour trips and a hundred and sixteen PM peak hour trips. In regards to level of service impact analysis, this was prepared by ETE, which is included in your packets as exhibit J. Three intersections were analyzed. Number one, Calabasas Road and Muro Road. Number two, the US-101 freeway south bound ramps in Calabasas Road. And number three, Parkway Calabasas and Calabasas Road. The level of service analysis looks at existing conditions, existing plus project, and cumulative plus project. With the cumulative impacts plus project impacts, all intersections are expected to operate at the same level of service or better due to the planned construction of the city roundabout at the intersection of Calabasas Road and Muro Road, which will improve the intersection from a level of service C to a level of service A. Moving on to VMT, under SEQA, there are three screening criteria for VMT. Number one, the project size and type of project. Number two, whether it's a low VMT area. And number three, projects within a transit priority area, or TPA. So based on these three screening criteria, the project will have a less-than-significant impact due to the fact that auto sales are a local-serving retail use, and the size of the dealership is below the fifty-thousand-square-foot threshold. So it screens out based on number one, which is project size and type. Therefore, it screens out a further analysis under SEQA. So moving on to staff conclusions. Staff concludes that the proposed automobile dealership is in allowed use in the Commercial Limited CL zoning district and Commercial Auto Retailer Car Overlay Zone. The proposed project conforms to the development standards of the CL zoning district, car overlay zone, and scenic corridor overlay zone, and compliance is documented within the written staff report. Additionally, the ARP recommended approval of the project. Lastly, a final initial study slash mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project in accordance with the California SEQA guidelines. And as fully documented in the final IS slash M and D, all areas listed as potentially significant have been mitigated to levels that are no longer significant due to project modifications and/or inclusion of mitigation measures. So staff's recommended action is that the commission direct staff to prepare a resolution to either recommend adoption of the M and D or recommend not to adopt the M and D, and recommend approval of the project and associated applications to the city council, or recommend denial of the project and associated applications to the city council. So it's either one or two, and three or four. For file numbers, SPR dash twenty-two-three dash zero-zero-four, OTP dash twenty-two-three dash zero-zero-six, LTM dash twenty-two-four dash zero-zero-four, SCP dash twenty-two-three dash zero-zero-two, SGNP dash twenty-two-three dash zero-zero-one, and SGN dash twenty-two-three dash zero-three-zero. Thank you, commissioners. I am available for questions, and we do also have the applicant here for about a ten-to-fifteen-minute presentation as well. All right.
Thank you, Jacqueline.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Excellent presentation. I think we've got a good idea about the project. I do, before asking whether any of the commissioners have questions of staff, I do want to mention that aside from the written submission at the earlier planning commission meeting, the written submission by Tim Smith, thank you, and the oral presentation at that time, we did receive a written submission from Ann Boland, also Bob Smith, BMW, and that will be part of the record. Okay. Do we have, do we have questions of staff before I open the public hearing?
Madam Chair, I also want to mention that we also have our public works director, Curtis Castle, here tonight, as well as Tom Miracle, who is the city's traffic consultant, also available for questions.
Thank you.
And representative from Invicom, who worked on the mitigated negative declaration.
Terrific. We've got a full complement. Thank you. Okay. Where shall we start? Commissioner Leah, do you have any questions of staff before the public hearing?
Just a quick question. The car wash, is that exclusive for the dealership, or is it open to the public?
I believe it's for the dealership, but I can let the applicant speak to their operations a little bit.
Okay.
Commissioner Washburn.
I'll reserve my questions until after I hear from everybody.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Hosina? Commissioner Harrison?
Oh, yes, I have questions of staff, right? Is the monument sign higher than the other monument signs on the street? Not the square foot, it's just the altitude?
No, there's a few monument signs on the street that are 25 feet in height, which is the maximum allowable for, under that council stipulation in the code.
Perfect, thanks. And then the second one is, there was a reference on Slide 27 to a new roundabout at Calabasas Road and Murro Road. Is, is there going to be another one, or what are they? Because there already is one there.
I'll defer to our public works department for answers on that one.
I believe that's the same one, yeah.
So it needs to be?
Right at Murro and Calabasas Road.
So it's not going to be improved, it's just already, it's already improved?
It's designed, right.
No, I mean, the one that's there now, that's been there for years?
There's no roundabout right now.
At Murro Road and Calabasas Road?
No.
It's not a technical roundabout?
Oh, it's not a technical roundabout. You do drive through it, though, sort of?
You can drive through it, correct, and, and turn left if you're coming north of the south.
So there's a plan for another roundabout to go there?
We have our public works director, if you want to.
And how much does that cost, or when is that coming? Or is this dealership paying for that?
So the question about the roundabout, it's, there is no existing roundabout. We have a project that's currently nearing the end of design that will construct a roundabout at Calabasas Road and Murro Road. Right now, it's, the configuration is a little awkward. There's some median islands in the intersection, but it's not a roundabout.
Will the roundabout cover land, or will it, will it go outside the city boundary, the proposed roundabout? Because I don't believe the city owns the, the bridge, or anything, you know, once?
No, the roundabout will be contained on city property. We do have some, some, some adjacent improvements that, that go into Caltrans right away, and we're going to obtain a encroachment from Caltrans.
Is there any need for this roundabout? Because when I drive there, there's just no problem. You just drive right through, or you make one stop, it's really easy.
I think the intersection as it exists is very unconventional. I think if you're, if you, like many drivers do, make a right turn as they go up Murro, Calabasas Road, it works well, but it doesn't really facilitate other turning movements. And a roundabout will definitely facilitate turning movements. It will also improve pedestrian access. I just, I don't want to go too far down this road of this project, since it's not on the agenda.
Well, but it is on this slide, so I, it was brought up as something that would improve the level of service for this dealership. Is this dealership going to have an impact on that intersection?
Commissioner Harrison, I think to answer that question of how it relates to the dealership and the transportation analysis, it looks at three different things: the existing conditions, and then the proposed project, and then the cumulative total of other projects in the area plus the project. So, in that segment of the analysis, the cumulative total of other projects plus this project, the roundabout is another proposed project in the area, so that's where it comes into place. It's not tied to this dealership, but it is looked at as part of the analysis, since we look at the cumulative impact.
If I may, Michael, if I may, for a second. When, when did this project, this proposed roundabout project, when did it, when was it first conceptualized?
So it's actually been around several years. The design contract was awarded in 2022.
If I may, the, the roundabout project has been in the capital improvement program that has gone before this commission and been reviewed against the general plan and found to be consistent with the general plan. And that was some years ago. We're now talking about a funded project that remains in the CIP today.
So it's not a project that came about because of the Kia application?
No, no. This was something that was already in the plans and already in our general plan as well.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Has the proposed dealership offered to contribute to that cost?
No.
I mean, because the BMW dealership did contribute to road improvements. I'm just questioning that.
The, the roundabout is fully funded by local return money through Metro.
Local what?
Local return monies through Metro.
So it's already? It already has funding for it?
Yes.
I get it, okay. Thank you. The BMW, BMW said that this project is grossly underparked regardless of what the numbers that you're looking at on the code. Is there substantially less parking for this proposed dealership for the expected volume compared to the other dealerships, just based on, you know, some sort of projections?
I can't speak to volume necessarily, or what their projections are for their operations, but our code just defines it as purely square footage for each, and it separates it into those four or five areas that were listed. So the required parking is only based on square footage of each area. They have a little bit smaller of a footprint than BMW, so that's why different parking numbers are required for each dealership, since it's based on the square footage of each of those distinct areas that the dealership has.
Right, so that's the code, but I wanted to know in actuality what, what's going on at the other dealerships. And some dealerships, and we'll get to this, have like a storefront, but then a backlot somewhere where they have a lot of inventory, or, you know, do you think, because they don't have enough parking there?
We can let the applicant speak to their operations for that as well.
All right. I think that's all I have for staff. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Steiner, anything?
I do have a question. You said the project is compatible with the design.
Commissioner Steiner, I'm sorry. Can you bring your, thank you.
You said that the project is compatible with the aesthetics in the area, and it looked like, from just those images, most of the buildings were all white. So what are the colors that are compatible, so I know?
We do have, let me pull my PowerPoint back up. One second. So this photo on the left-hand side here is just the side of the Bob Smith dealership, so you can see that that side does incorporate those black and white colors. And this photo on the right-hand side is actually what the Cadillac dealership used to look like, just up until about, I think, last year. So it did used to be completely black. So although the primary colors for the adjacent dealerships right now are more silver and white, they do have black accents, and the dealerships do incorporate black elements, again, especially this. I believe this was most recently Volvo, which was completely black, and that's the property adjacent to the west. I'm sorry, to the east.
I think it was brown originally.
I think this was, this picture, I think, is 2022. So as of 2022, it was, it looks like fully black.
Right, it's been through.
It was previously orange and white and with a green roof.
And I believe that the Mercedes dealership has black elements as well.
It's not, yeah, it's common, especially for these dealerships, to kind of change that aesthetics over time as the corporate image changes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Steiner, anything else? No? All right, then I'm going to open the public hearing. It is my understanding that, that the applicant has a presentation, so I have a card for Dustin Womer. If you would please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Dustin Womer. I'm Diamond West. We're a planning and engineering firm working on the Kia project. I live in Newbury Park. Our office is in, on Calabasas Road in Calabasas. All right, thank, thank you, commissioners. With me tonight, I'm going to do the presentation, but I have AHT, two representatives from the architecture firm, working on the project, Bombardier with LNDG, Carl Schmidt, who's one of the owners with Hello Auto Group, and Jody Ste, who's the project manager of the project. So we have a good, well-experienced team, including many with a lot of experience in the automotive, you know, dealership industry. There we go. Yes, first, a little bit about Hello Auto Group. They're a small, privately-owned and operated firm, or dealership group. They have six other dealerships in Southern California, including in San Diego, Temecula, and Santa Clarita, and they're looking forward to having their first dealership here in Calabasas. Carl also has an extensive experience in the Midwest, working for a larger developer group, who did dealerships throughout the Midwest. Just a little bit of background, kind of through the process that we've gone through over the past almost three and a half years. When we started, the first kind of official process we did was our community forum. I think only two or three people from the community participated. That was actually kind of in COVID still, and it was one of the Zoom meeting, community forums. But it was well documented and noticed, but we didn't get a whole lot of interaction in that particular meeting. So we went ahead and submitted a pre-app with the city, and had spent the last few years working back and forth with city staff, fire department, CEQA consultant, et cetera, et cetera. It's a very, you know, complex set of rules and regulations that we have to comply with, along with making, you know, the dealership in a way that's functional and works well and considers all the environmental impacts that a project could have on a site like this. So kind of moving on, we went to DRC in May of 2023 and went through a seminal process. And we had our second community forum in July of 2023. It went very well, but also somewhat limited participation from the community. We had our architectural view panel meeting in, in 2023 in July. They were very complimentary of the design. They asked for a couple somewhat minor ads, as Jaclyn mentioned, and we were able to incorporate those into design. We felt like it actually made it a much better project, so we were happy for that input. Since then, the city started their, kind of producing the technical reports and CEQA documents, and that was about almost a two-year process, going back and forth. And as Jaclyn mentioned, we originally scheduled in December, when Tim and his team had some concerns, and so we went ahead and paused the project, and we met with Tim and the city several times and trying to see if we could try to address. And we made some attempts to address the comments, but I don't think to the full satisfaction of, of Tim and his group. And here we are tonight. So some of the design features or goals, kind of when we walked into this project, knowing, you know, the city's requirements, this is a hillside site, it has a lot of environmentally sensitive areas, and so our goal coming in was to do a compact building and development footprint, primarily into the existing Spurling Nursery development footprint, which is about four acres, and that allows us to preserve the steeper undeveloped hillsides, which have, you know, many oak trees and other sensitive habitat in them. Part of that kind of in that same line in the goal to reduce, you know, impacts to oak trees, while also complying with, you know, the various city regulations, fire department regulations, all your environmental and CEQA requirements. We had the goal to enhance the Calabasas frontage. It's been kind of a, you know, on the books for a long time to improve the streets, so we're doing our part by improving our frontage, widening the road, extending bike lanes and sidewalks, street trees, et cetera. And kind of in line with that, we have to provide all the components necessary to, you know, run a well-efficient, you know, dealership and comply with Kia brand requirements. So these kind of like, kind of this whole array of sometimes competing interests to comply with to develop the site. I'll kind of run through, Jaclyn did a very thorough presentation, so I might have some duplicate here, but I'll, so I'll run through it somewhat quickly. But again, here's our site. We're right in between the BMW to the west and storage parking lot to the east. Just kind of reiterate, the site is, is heavily developed. The front, you know, 20% or so near Calabasas Road is mostly paved, and went through a demolition process about five years ago where the structures were removed, but the pavement and retaining walls and terraces and fencing are still existing. Here's an aerial imagery, gives you kind of a good idea of where the nursery footprint was. It's kind of soon after the demo, you can kind of see how the demo looks. So one goal was to stay within that footprint as much as we can and not extend beyond that, so we're not encroaching to areas that weren't already encroached in historically. Kind of the same line, here's a site survey, and the area outlined in gray is, is the rough outline of the former Spurling Nursery improvements. The kind of darker boxes you see were actually where the buildings and kind of more substantial structures were located before the demolition. Kind of in line, the other thing we look at is, is developing, you know, per-city requirements on the flatter portions of the site. In this particular case, you can see that the yellow and green represent the, the more flatter portions, and as you get to the darker colors, the reds and the purples, that's the steeper portions of the site. The yellow and green roughly line up with where the existing footprint of Spurling Nursery was. And kind of, kind of a major, third major kind of piece of the puzzle of kind of, when you're doing the initial site planning, is looking at your sensitive vegetation, your environmental impact. And so this is from the MND, but the darker green areas represent mostly oak trees, and there's a couple California walnuts mixed in, I think, further up the slope. And then the lighter shade of green is your kind of native habitat, sugar bush, sagebrush, et cetera. And for the most part, we were able to avoid almost most of those areas with some encroachments into some of the trees, and we'll, and we'll get into the, the removal of the one tree that's more substantial and kind of the reasoning for that. So kind of taking into consideration, you know, getting on the lower levels of the site, flatter portions of the site, looking at oak tree impacts. This is the site plan that we felt was most compliant with the city requirements and also could function well as a dealership. So again, the compact footprint, you'll see the existing oak trees that are shaded in light green are all being protected and maintained in place. And, does this have a pointer? Does it point at all? If you can point to the existing tree that we're removing? Right there, yeah. So this was kind of a back and forth, and there's a couple ways to, to get a dealership on this site. And this is a, you know, a relatively small building for a dealership, so we're already trying to get this as compact as possible. If we have to avoid that tree and try to protect that tree, it's going to push the building into all those other trees, because there's not enough width to protect that tree and place a building, and this building is very compact and efficient, without pushing further into the hillside. And actually, prior to this project, I actually worked on a Nissan dealership that was being proposed, and it actually removed 18 of those trees, or proposed, I shouldn't say, was proposing to remove about 18 of those trees, in order to get a larger building and more storage of vehicles. And so we kind of turned it around and were able to protect a lot of the trees, but it does require the one tree to be removed, and a couple other smaller trees as well, but, you know, the more substantial heritage tree, which is not taken lightly, but in, kind of factoring in all our options, that was the least impactful, in our opinion. Here's a cross-section to the site. I think there was a version of this. This is just kind of illustrate just the, the large percentage of the hillside that we're, you know, keeping as, as natural. And again, that's where your sensitive habitat is mostly located, and there's a lot of oak trees, I think 40-some oak trees located in this zone, too, that we're preserving. And you can kind of see how much lower the building is in relationship to the, just the very, very right, as you'll start to see, that's where the houses are in Vista Point, are right there at the highest point. You can see it's, you know, we're well below impacts for that community, as well as keeping kind of a low profile. And you'll also see how we step the building into the hillside, so you come in on the first level as you're closer to the street. The road goes up to kind of stick closer to the existing terrain and has a, enters from the second level on the backside to kind of work with the terrain. One other factor that we have to consider whenever we're developing, and obviously more heightened scrutiny maybe now, since the fires, is fire access. And so this illustrates, we spend some time back and forth. And so this illustrates, we spent some time back and forth with LA County Fire to make sure we were providing proper access and hydrants for them. And you can kind of see in gray is the fire access road. What's kind of interesting is the front side of the building's 35 feet, and so they want to be able to get a ladder truck in there, so that road has to be a little bit wider. And as you go up the hill, it's basically a one-story building, so that it could be the normal 26-foot for a commercial. And you see in the blue shape, there's your fire department turnaround. And then we provide a fire department pedestrian access between where they can get their vehicles, so they can access all four sides of the main building. So as far as the dealership components, this is actually the aesthetic of the latest for Kia, so this is kind of the aesthetic you're going to see inside the building. But just all your basic components that we have to, you know, make sure we include is a showroom, you know, administration service, parts, parking, vehicle display, and vehicle One of the creative ideas to kind of work with the site, which we actually got complimented by the architecture review panel, because they had a kind of, in their opinion, in our opinion as well, a good impact on what you see from the street, was pushing the showroom up to the second floor. Because without that, the building footprint would have to be bigger to get both the service and the showroom on that first level. That was kind of an early design decision, and it really allowed us to make the building a little more compact and kind of fit into the terrain a little bit better. But like I said, the effect from the outside is you get all this nice glazing and glass on the second level opposed to some of the other dealerships where it's parking on that level. So now you're trying to disguise parking opposed to having this nice kind of your kind of primary view from the second level. And so that was one of the kind of design decisions that really helped allow us to kind of keep that compact footprint. Didn't want to note, I think it was in one of the letters from BMW about concerns about stacking from Calabasas Road, and I did want to point out that we have three lanes in our service drive. And as you can see, that can accommodate, well, right there, it's accommodating 12, and in a pinch, you could probably accommodate another three. But we actually have three different lanes, so when someone's coming to drop off their car for service, there would have to be 12 people in front of them before you would start to even stack outside the building, which they're going to move those. They have porters that come and get your car and move it into the service bay or wherever it goes from there, so we don't anticipate that being a problem. We also have an additional 20 service base, so that's pretty good for a dealership of this size. On the second level, as I mentioned, is the showroom administration, kind of along the front, and that's what's facing the street, so. And then behind that is additional parking for both customer parking, but also some additional inventory, and that's also on the second level. And kind of pointing out here on the slide that the drive to the second level comes from grade through the back, and then we have another drive that goes up to the roof. Kind of looking at that in elevation, kind of section view, so you can kind of visualize that a little bit more. Again, on the far left, at the bottom, you have the first floor lobby, then you have the service drive, the three different kind of entries in the service drive, and on the second level, the showroom and parking behind. This image was shown earlier, but it kind of helps illustrate kind of how the project's in the upper, it's about four acres of development out of 11, to give you a flavor, and then the upper hillside's being preserved. So, you know, a big topic of conversation over the last several months is kind of the location of this, our driveway. We spent a lot of time ourselves, but also with various people with Public Works and the staff, and a couple different consultants who reviewed it, and everyone's agreed that what we propose is the best location for the driveway. We've also accommodated a loading zone, which will allow for delivery vehicles to be able to park along the curb instead of in the center median, which is kind of what most dealerships do currently. We're also dedicating 20 feet of private land right now to, right away, to allow for the widening of the roads, sidewalks, street trees, et cetera. Here is an existing view with someone walking on the street. Soon we'll have hopefully a sidewalk there for them, and our rendering, and as Jaclyn noted, one of the changes we made in response to concerns from BMW is to relocate the monument sign, which we actually thought in kind of hindsight was probably, it's a better location anyway, so we're happy to do that. In addition, as also mentioned, we spent a lot of time looking at different options to see what our options were to be able to maybe adjust the driveway some. We felt we could move it nine feet, which creates a 20-foot separation, and we've offered that, it's still an option that's on the table for consideration. I don't think, or the correspondence was that Tim and his team did not feel that that was far enough away for, to make them, you know, feel comfortable with that design. So just looking through some of the project benefits, the project's going to, again, be improving Calabasas Road and extending sidewalks, widening the road, street trees. We're also actually providing a legal left turn and out for BMW in their secondary entrance. Currently, it's not legal to make a left in or out of that entrance. The way we're designing our left-hand turn into our site extends through the secondary access to BMW. That also allows for left-hand turn movements in and out of both their driveways now. We're improving, obviously, a blighted, vacated property that's been sitting vacant for about a decade now. We spent a lot of time and energy looking at the site, making sure we're designing a site that is sensitive to the environment the best we can. The project will have a significant tax revenue to the city once it's open, helping complete the vision of the West Calabasas Road and car overlay, and providing new employment I did want to mention, Commissioner Leah, I think, had mentioned or asked a question about the car wash, and the car wash is exclusively used by the dealership. You can't come and like pay to use the dealership.
No, I was concerned about the personal trips.
Yeah, it's only for dealership use, so someone who's getting service at the dealership, they would wash your car maybe too, so. So I'm available for questions, and again, we have our design team and ownership as well.
All right, thank you. Before I open this up for questions, I actually have just a couple of questions for the moment. I just want to make sure that I understand the alternate, the proposed alternate driveway, which is nine feet east of the current proposal, correct?
Correct, yes.
If that were to happen, that would shorten the loading zone by nine feet, correct?
Correct.
And you would lose a parking space.
Correct. A value of parking space, really.
Has there been any discussion of how to, because that would take them below the required number of spaces?
Since the city doesn't have a parking requirement for inventory spaces, I'm sure they would be able to just take one of those inventory spaces and designate it for customers.
Okay, thank you. Speaking of customer parking, did I understand correctly that the second floor and/or roof, there is parking for customers?
Not on the roof, I don't believe, but yes, on the second floor.
Correct.
So there's two surface parking lots for customers, and there's some additional customer parking on the second level.
And did I see a, did I see a gate in the rear of the building that accesses that second floor?
Yeah, and that could be open during business operation, yeah. It's a garage door.
Well, that's my question. Would it be open during, because otherwise, how would, how would customers access the parking?
No, no, the garage door would be open during business hours, yes.
Okay. If the building were to, you actually answered my main question, but related to that, if the building were to be pushed back, as you had mentioned, you mentioned that that would impact about, that would require the removal of about 18, 18 trees.
Yeah, well, not necessarily this exact building. We worked on a project for Nissan that actually submitted an application and ended up withdrawing it. That project did push the building behind and actually preserved that one tree that this project is proposing to remove, but it removed 18 trees in the oak woodland that's further back into the hillside.
Or any of those 18 trees heritage oaks?
Many of them, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. That's all I have for the moment. Commissioner Steiner, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Yes. Do you know how many cars per day will be there for service versus there to purchase?
You know, Carl Schmitz, who's the owner, probably knows a little bit more about operational questions, so he might be able to better answer that question.
Why don't, why don't you hold that question and then, don't forget? And I would ask that you fill out a speaker card at some point, please. You have one, if you can. Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this for so long, Dustin. I'm concerned about the signage, the proposed signage, which is different from all the other dealerships in Calabasas and all the other Hello dealerships, in that it just says Hello and the logo. And the problem to me is this new logo of Kia is kind of indecipherable. And I, like, I'm looking at the Subaru dealership, for example, they have the, and all the other car dealerships there, they'll have the logo and the word. So like, there's the Pleiades logo, you know, the seven, whatever it's called, the stars, which is Subaru in Japanese, and then the word Subaru, because, anyway, and there's also Hello. So I'm wondering if there's a way to do that. On the Subaru dealer, they have a column in the middle with the logo, which actually breaks up the facade, which isn't bad, but something, if it just has that funny logo, which is only a couple of years old.
Yeah.
And the word Hello, no, I don't know who's going to know what that is. That logo is hard to read, it's not, and I guess it's meant to be Kia, but it does, it looks like KN also, so it's.
Well, the Kia folk would be very disappointed, as they spend a lot of time and energy on it.
Yeah, but this is like their fifth logo. I mean, it's okay, but if they have the word, but Mercedes logo, everybody knows that logo and still says Mercedes. Everybody knows the BMW logo, and it still says BMW. And the same with the Audi, you see those four circles, but it still says Audi, and the Cadillac Shield's been around for 100 years, and it still says Cadillac, so I'm wondering if they can, if you can add the word Kia, or Hello Kia, or something like that. I'm concerned about that, because people aren't going to know.
Yeah, I don't know if I can answer that question. I know that, the Kia, Carl might be able to better answer that. I know that, you know, these brands are very particular about, you know, consistency and what their aesthetic they're looking for.
Are we looking at the same thing?
The logo actually is, the logo is Kia.
It's KIA. It's an interesting font, I hear what you're saying.
This is their new logo, I mean, three years old or whatever, and to me, it's not very good, but that's, Dennis can judge that, but it's not, it's not the word. Like Mercedes logo, everybody knows that logo, everybody knows the Audi logo, and yet it still says Audi. You know, I don't want there to be doubt, I want to help.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah.
The only concern here, of course, is we're talking about content of a sign, which raises First Amendment issues, and so we need to be very careful with regard to suggestions.
It's a suggestion, if you want to be known as a Kia dealership, it should say Hello Kia or something.
I'm sure they're hopeful that, you know, over time, that that logo will be very recognizable.
No, but again, Mercedes, Audi, BMW, everybody knows those logos, and they still put.
Okay, let's move on, because that's content.
The second, yeah, but I want it to be successful, not, you know. Anyway, the angle of the building is pretty uncomfortable or odd to me, and I had the same, I had a problem when 20, what was it, 25 years ago, when the BMW dealership went in, and I asked the architect, it was Jeff Cooper, to round the edges, and he did, and he did a great job, and it made it look softer. This angle, I'm not sure why the building is at such a different angle from the street. There must be a reason, but it's pretty uncomfortable, because on the west side, you get this point, and then it goes in. And I'm wondering if they, maybe this is again a question for an architect, but if they can do something with that jutting angle on the west side and either truncate it entirely and make it flat, you know, on that corner, or curb it convex or concave, either way, so it doesn't jut out. It's not, it doesn't look good to me for this scenic corridor to have this sort of funny angled building with a jutting corner on the west side. So that's just, I'm wondering if they can do something like that.
Well, I think the, you know, the design, you have a situation where the property lines are not at the same, you know, perpendicular to the, or to the street, so that's maybe what you're seeing.
I mean, the property line, the property is different from the street?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a rectangle, if you imagine that.
So what's, but what's in between the property line and the street that, I mean, how does the street look straight, and then this one is such?
The property line's like this, and then the street's running it like this.
Okay, but then I would do something to conform, because it doesn't, to me, I have a problem with that corner, because this is supposed to be a scenic corridor, and again, you're trying to sell things, and it looks, when you drive up from the west, all you see is a corner, anyway. Can, it seems to me that, let's, assuming that this is grossly underparked, which is what BMW says, where can you find another lot to do that, to store inventory? I mean, the other dealerships have other locations, or some of them do, across the street, whatever, obviously, you don't, you can't do that. But has the owner looked into other lots down the street or somewhere?
I do think Carl can speak to that, but I think the intention is that there would be an off-site lot, but that could also change over time. You can find leases that it might be short-term, long-term, and the idea is that the, there would be off-site storage of inventory to, and again, Carl can speak to it, but what that allows us to do is make the footprint smaller. And again, that saves oak trees, that saves environmental impact grading, retaining walls, et cetera, et cetera. And so there is a, there is a trade-off with that, and it's really an operational trade-off, so there's a little extra cost to the operator to run a business that way, but it actually creates a lot less, you know, impact here, you know, locally. So I think that that was something that was discussed early on and decided that that was the best way to, you know, produce a project here on this particular site.
Okay, so I'm hopeful that there is an off-site, or whether it changes or not, I don't know, but I just don't, I'm getting the impression there isn't, this is such a small lot, actually, the part that projects out compared to the, all the other car dealerships, this is a fraction of the size.
Yeah, the width, the width.
The front of it, yeah, the width of it. It's not even half of the size of the other ones, so I think there has to be other, there has to be off-site.
But isn't that an operational consideration for the owner?
Right, but I'm just concerned about the success of it and so forth, and they're just, and also what BMW's saying, there just isn't enough parking there. There just isn't, to me, and you've addressed.
They meet, they meet the code requirements.
Yeah, but the code isn't the reality, so, and.
I understand, but I think that they are more invested with their own success than anybody, and operationally, I would, you know, it is up to them to make it work.
But that's why I'm happy to hear that they are looking at.
Of course.
Off-site locations to store.
They kind of would have to.
Yeah, but I didn't know that, because it wasn't in here, so, okay. That's all. As far as questions, maybe Mr. Schmidt can, can address that later.
Okay, keep, keep, keep your questions for him in mind. For this, for this speaker, any questions?
So the, the distance in between the driveways is a safety concern, a valid one, but it could be mitigated with just clear, absolute visibility, so you can see somebody driving their new car as far back as possible. I see there's a plan for a western sycamore, you know, I'm not in the business of trying to remove trees, but I don't see any renderings that satisfy my concern for that safety. The tree's going to get bigger with time, the trunk's going to get bigger with time, you're not going to be able to see if another car is coming out of the same driveway. So can we just address that briefly, for me, please?
Yeah, we did align it, so it may be deceiving, because what you're seeing is a tree canopy and not a tree trunk, right? And the site's relatively steep, coming down, and so there is a requirement to maintain visibility, and I don't want to speak for Public Works, but, you know, the, the purpose of, once you can't, to not have some middle ground where you're 40, 50, 60 feet away, and you're not necessarily seeing each other, because of the distance, the closer you are, you're going to have a car, you know, right, right there. But yeah, we won't have any obstruction in our kind of visibility triangles, so the car should be visible. If there's any issue in the final design, we're happy to accept the condition to, you know, further evaluate that, to make sure.
know, further evaluate that, to make sure that that line of sight is very clear between the two driveways.
I also wanted to just mention how, when the Cadillac dealership was painted black, it stuck out like a sore thumb, it didn't look good with the area. Again, it's a permitted color here, black, but I guess my question for you, or Mr. Schmidt, would be, would Kia approve of a non-black, more white, fitting in with the surrounding dealerships, because, again, I remember when Cadillac was black, and it just did not, did not look good.
I will say that, I think that was originally the, black for the, for the Mini Cooper that went there. That building has a very long frontage, and the entire building was black, right, from, from edge to edge to edge, and it had a very long building. What's kind of interesting is, originally, our original Smidl had the top band black, and the architectural view panel felt like it'd be more balanced to take the lower band below the glass, and then wrap the corner, and actually thought that was a better aesthetic, and actually, we agree with that, so it's, but a vast majority of the building is gonna be like a light gray, just so you know. We're obviously, we're showing the, the front rendering, and you're, and that's what you're gonna see, but you're gonna see a lot of glass, and underneath that, you're gonna see the, the gray, so it's not as, it's just not as predominant as the, the Mini Cooper building was.
Sure, and again, we can't make you choose a different color. It's just my opinion, for whatever that's worth, that it would look better with a lighter, softer color, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Leah?
Yes, I have a question. We've been talking about visibility coming out of the driveway. The rigs that bring you the cars, I've never ridden in one, but I pass them on the freeway, they're long and they're tall. I have seen no discussions about the visibility impact when they're parked where they're supposed to be parked. What can you say about that, sir?
Do you have a, you zoom in a little bit, that, so, what you're not necessarily seeing or obvious is, is that parking lane is, is very wide, so instead of a normal, let's say, eight-foot space that you have to park along the street, in this case, I think it's 13, 14 feet, and so a car will be able to pull out a little bit further outside the driveway. So first, you'd pause, because you wanna make sure you see pedestrians, then you could do the next, kind of pull out a little bit further to see traffic, you know, well before you're out into the travel lanes.
Is it possible to have those mirrors they have, so then they're coming out, they could, they could see, they don't have to pull all the way out and get surprised?
I think there might be one, does BMW, I think, I'm sorry, I think there might be one for one of the other dealerships, I'm trying to picture now, I don't wanna speak out of place. I don't think we're against placing some sort of mirror that might help with visibility, you know, as long as the city's okay with that, some sort of, you know...
Okay, let's take that up later with the city.
Yeah, but I, wouldn't that mirror have to be across the street?
Yes, it would, I was talking about someone pulling out a parking lot.
Which is, is, yeah, now we're, yeah, yeah, because you're talking about, you're not talking about somebody coming out and turning right around the truck, you're talking about somebody who's coming out and going to be pulling into the left, into the, the lane going to the left, going west, because, well, no, because the, if, if I understand this correctly, this lane, that, that the trucks dropping off the cars will be in, is to the right as you're coming out of the driveway, correct? It is not to the left.
It's to the right of the driveway, correct.
Okay, so it only impacts if you're going to cross and go to the left, because it's the westbound traffic that you'd need to see, and the only way to be able to see that, unless I'm mistaken, is if there were a mirror across the street.
If I could, if I could add to that as well, Chair Bosberg, if you can see in this image here, there is also the eight-foot no parking zone immediately next to the driveway, so the loading zone doesn't start right next to the driveway, so those large trucks won't be parked right next to someone trying to turn in or out, there is about eight feet of space before any sort of loading would occur.
Thank you.
And you're sure, you're guaranteeing that no one will park in a no parking zone?
I don't think we can guarantee, but that's about as much as the city can do.
Because I can tell you from experience, there's a shopping center across from Albertson's, and there are constantly trucks parked in the fire zone. So, expediency always works when someone has to deliver something.
Yeah, the problem is, I don't think that we can, we can't do a whole lot about people breaking the law, other than sending the sheriff after them.
Doesn't work at that other shopping center.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't think that parking is, is a number-one priority. Okay, anything else, Commissioner Leah, Commissioner Washburn?
Well, are we gonna hear from the other public speakers?
We absolutely are, this is just, at the moment, questions for the current speakers.
I have nothing at this point, other than, given all the circumstances, I'm looking at the rendering dot one, it's about halfway through the package from AHT, and I have a lot of questions about how the entire overlay zone functions, and we've hinted at the issues of the roundabout, which may or may not occur in any way that we currently understand, and where the trucks do ultimately, if they're 90 feet long, do discharge, and what happens to all the, I guess, the traffic aspects. So, I'd like to hear from all of the folks before I come back to that, because I've been hearing through all of the proposals to put in, you know, a cafe and classic car club across the street, and, you know, the changes in ownership and dealership and corporate requirements and everything that fellow Commissioner Harrison talked about in terms of identity, stuff like that, so, you know, we've done a great job, and I think this building actually fits in and looks really nice, relatively speaking to the impression that I think the city, in all of its years, has looked to accomplish. We went to war with the folks at, at BMW about their corporate demands, and, you know, they came back and responded with, you know, with reasonable stuff, and everybody's been successful along the way. So, I think that's part of what we're trying to do, we're building community, not just a business.
Yep.
So I'll, I'll respond at some later point.
All right. All right, Mr. Wilmer, thank you.
Thank you.
Since there were specific questions for you, Mr. Schmidt, you wanna come on up? And again, if you'd state your name and city of residence, please.
Certainly, my name is Carl Schmidt, I live in West Hollywood.
Okay, is there anything you wanna say, or you wanna answer some questions?
I'll answer some questions. To address on the service issue, we're anticipating 40 to 50 cars a day, the vast majority of the service customers are pickup and drop-off, or we also anticipate doing delivery, pickup and delivery, so that there wouldn't be a time when there's 40 or 50 people waiting or there at a time, so, but that, that would kind of be the intended volume on the customer pay side. In terms of the Kia logo, no way would they change their logo, they're extremely proud of it, I think Chairman Yun would go crazy if he heard your feedback, but I understand what you're saying, but they don't, they have a very specific brand identity, and there's not any, any accommodation to have the word Kia in any of theirs, they're, they have this new logo, I don't disagree with you, you have to look twice at it to understand what it is sometimes, I'm used to it now, 'cause I've been a Kia dealer for five years, but they're very proud of their logo, and they don't, they have no provision or no allowance for their words Kia on any of their buildings moving forward, so they just...
So we can't say Hello Kia, so, okay.
As far as the parking, certainly, we need off-site parking, I think one of the, one of our intents when we started looking at this project, I mean, I had a lot of feedback from Dustin, 'cause he was involved in the other projects, and I think Jaguar Land Rover and Nissan both unsuccessfully tried to develop into this parcel, so we really didn't have any idea at all initially about going in, I mean, I would be a oak tree serial killer if we had, you know, dug back 200 yards into the hillside and had a parking to accommodate what we would love to have, but it just, it wouldn't be pragmatic, I don't think, and we thought we'd really have a hard time coming, you say, hey, we wanna murder a bunch of oak trees to park cars, when there are a lot of other places, so. The other aspect is, in, you know, the digital commerce is certainly taking over most retail, the idea that you have to have these massive parking fields of cars is just not, not required anymore, so we would definitely have off-street, off-site parking, I've looked around the area, and there seems to be plenty of that available. In, in, in our world, the way that we have it right now, my store's in Valencia, we're in an auto mall, we have smaller footprint lots, have off-site parking, and a lot of the times, we actually drop unload transports, particularly for new cars, on the off-site lot, as opposed to trying to squeeze them into the lot, because, you know, the lots get congested with customers and, and traffic and whatnot, so. Our transports are, you know, I, you know, I didn't measure a transport, I've done, you know, did poke around, did some research, seems like on the DOT site, they're 48 to 53 feet, plus the tractor trailer, so 75, 80 feet is relatively common. In Kia world, sometimes I had, a couple days ago, I had a transport that was hauling, it was a four-car transport, so we do get some of that because of our proximity to the port, they'll send a few cars over that way, you know, as well, so, and on the used car side, it's, it's kind of the same thing when they're dropping cars off, so, there, I know we have the allowance in front for the, the transport parking and loading and unloading, everybody else is unloading in the street, I guess, from what I'd heard, and I think this is a better solution than that, I guess worst-case scenario, we could do what everybody else does, and unload in the street, so, but that, that has not been our plan all along. I think that's what I have, go ahead.
The western corner.
Oh, the western corner.
You know, the building is so angled, it doesn't show that in the plan, but in reality, it does.
Yeah, again, that's, that's Kia's intent, removing the black, it's, it's the same thing, they're insistent upon having that black as part of their identity, we could go back and remove the lower band, but again, we're at, we'd be conflicting with ARP, so, you know, I guess who are we trying to please in that situation? I think ARP gave the recommendation, we liked the way that it looked better anyway, and then you just get down to a person's individual preferences, so, you know. Other questions?
Well, yeah, you still didn't answer mine.
Yeah, fire away.
So, so first of all, ARP, we're, we're higher than that, so, so if we wanted less black, then that would be a recommendation, but I'm still concerned, again, the, the rendering doesn't show it, but in reality, when you go out there, it's a big angle on the western side, can you do something to cut off that angle, round it, or concave, you know, concave, convex, or truncate it?
It would not be approved by Kia, I just...
Well, I know you say that, but being, we, we had that 25 years ago, and BMW said, and other, and other dealers come and say, oh no, this is what the, this is what the BMW insists on, and you know what? They didn't, they allowed the BMW dealer to be changed, and not be corporate, and be individualized for Calabasas, to fit into the environment, so, I think if you ask them, or if that was an issue, they might come back and say, you know...
I, I don't know, I don't, I don't expect them to do that, but, you know, I guess, it's, I don't know, I guess...
Well, could you ask them?
I guess from an architectural point of view, I don't, I guess when I...
Let's reserve that for whether, when we're ready to, to vote on this, that's something...
Right, I mean, we're just getting resistance on the black, we're getting resistance on the corner, and I just wanted to point out that BMW, all, all other dealers have, have modified corporate design to fit into that area.
Understood.
Okay.
Any other, Commissioner Washburn?
In our discussion here, a thought has occurred, and a question about the actual physical location of the building, why did we put the driveway on the west side as opposed to on the east side of the building?
I would have to defer to Dustin on that.
Well, the, there's a bunch of reasons, 'cause we had studied this, because, you know, the BMW team had, you know, suggested that, so we went and studied it, there is, there's a handful of reasons, the street is actually sloping downward as you go to the east, and it's, I think, a couple feet or so, and so that means the entire site, if we start on that end, would have to be a couple feet lower, because we're, we're getting up as fast as we can. It also becomes very awkward, because now your drive aisles going through your parking lot, over your ADA access, and then spinning back around and coming up the side where you enter into the service bays, and so there's just all types of, you know, traffic going through your, your parking lot, and where all your pedestrians are at, and it just doesn't work well from that perspective. The other thing is, there's no right-of-way currently to do any improvements to the, in the road, to provide for a left-hand turnpocket in and out of our site, I forget, there's probably like a handful of other reasons, but it just, in our opinion, did not work. I think the city also prefers to have the, the driveways closer, when they can't get so far away, so they prefer to have them basically, if they could have it, I think their, their preference was that we merge them, if, in a perfect world, but if not, get them as close as we, as we can to each other, so that kind of in-between distance was also a concern of the city.
If I could add to that, and we do have our Public Works team here as well, who could probably best be able to answer that question, but if you could see on the slide here, we have our center turn lane, so based on where the center turn lane is able to start, because the adjacent property to the east still has that frontage that projects a little bit farther out into the road, there's not enough safe stopping distance to make a turn in and out on the east side of the property, and again, our Public Works team would probably be able to explain that in more technical terms, but because of where the center lane starts back here, by the time you have safe stop, safe stopping distance for a left turn is about this area of the property where the proposed driveway would be located.
Well, that answers my question, but I'll comment later.
Okay. Do we have anything, yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Steiner?
Sure. I have a lot of concerns about congestion on Calabasas Road, as it is, it's always very congested during certain hours during the day. What are the hours that you expect will be the primary times for your clients and your customers to be servicing or purchasing cars from your location?
The service volume usually comes in, kind of like before work and after work, certainly some people throughout the course of the day, but usually that 7:30, 8:00 in the morning, you know, commute around their way to work, dropping off their car, is typically when that comes in, and then if they're picking up, usually it's 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock in the afternoon. In terms of the retail traffic, you know, the mornings are typically slower, the retail traffic is usually mid-late afternoon and early evening, and winds down 6, 7 o'clock typically, so, there's some, a few stragglers, but we find that there's not as much activity 7, 8 o'clock as there used to be.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other questions, or Mr. Schmidt? Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Are there questions for the landscape architect? No? No? Mr., and I apologize if I pronounce this wrong, Mr. Bommerdeir? Did you wanna speak, or you're here to answer questions?
No questions.
Well, at least for the moment, I think you're off the hook, there aren't any questions. Thank you. All right. Mr. Smith? Again, please state your name and city of residence.
I'm Tim Smith, and I live in Lockenada, Flintbridge, California, but I've been in Calabasas for a long time. The Calabasas Planning Department has been very open with our concerns, for which we're very appreciative. Fundamentally, though, the size, building location, and characteristics of the property present challenges that may not possibly mitigate those problems. The only driveway that this property has room for is about 28 feet wide along the west side of the building. Our west driveway, the other side from there, is about 50 feet wide. The setback of the Kia building is about 66 feet from the proposed sidewalk. The setback of our service reception entrance is about 180 feet. All that space we have allows us to spread service customer vehicles entering at peak early morning hours and prevent them from being backed up onto Calabasas Road, also leaving room for vehicles exiting... also leaving room for vehicles exiting that area from our property at the same time. The Kia property has a total frontage of about 170 feet, compared to 560 feet for us, and Audi's 400 feet. Offloading of vehicles from transports, which requires up to 120 feet, will not be safely carried out in front of the Kia property. They simply won't use that, the drivers. Apparently, the parking capacity for the Kia project is 161 vehicles. Our capacity is 560 vehicles on site. I welcome anyone in this meeting tonight to come to our dealership, and you will see we're almost always filled to capacity with vehicles. In addition, we have a parking capacity of 129 vehicles for our employees on the lot between the proposed site and the Cadillac dealership. Our annual vehicle, new vehicle sales volume is 1,600. It's my understanding the Kia dealership has proposed for 2,000 units annually, which it must do to operate profitably. That translates to inventories of at least 300 vehicles most of the time. A dealership needs space for pre-owned inventory, vehicles for in-for-service, loan cars, demos, lease returns, and customer parking. It is entirely under capacity, and I don't know where those numbers come from. They do not address a car dealership that you shine. I can see the citizens of Calabasas are not breaking down the doors in opposition to their project, but this presents serious problems for motorists, pedestrians, delivery transports and trucks, bicyclists, and our family dealership. Thank you.
My name is Catherine Andrews, and I live in Pacific Palisades. Thank you so much for taking the time to hear me out. I just want to start by saying, we fundamentally are welcoming of any additional new car dealers in the Calabasas community. You know, the addition of Audi and, you know, all the stores, it just, it brings more business. It's a win for everyone. I think our concerns are coming from a place of having operated in this community on this street for many years, and understanding what is required to do it safely. And so we are very concerned, as Tim has said, about the volume of cars that would be coming in and out of a single-access driveway, so close to ours. Some of the things that were brought up, you know, in terms of what your concern was about the service cars coming in and out and how that would contribute to traffic on Calabasas Road. For our store, you know, we have about 70 to 90 customers dropping off and picking up every single day. With the volume that they will be selling, it'll be probably 40 to 50 cars a day within the first couple years, but that will grow. You know, that will grow to a similar volume of what we're processing. And a lot of the cars come in, the bulk of them are dropped off between 8:00 and 10:30 in the morning, and the majority of them are picked up by their, by customers between 4:00, you know, anytime between 4:00 and 6:00 PM. So that is the reality of the service operation there. In terms of the idea of having off-site storage for the new car inventory, that actually, that contributes to the safety hazard. Because even if you have off-site storage, that's going to increase the amount of jockeying of cars that you would have to get transport to and from the dealership to do things like pre-delivery inspections, to show customers the cars. You know, every car that comes in that's dropped off from the factory, a technician has to do a pre-delivery inspection. They have to drive the car. You have to put gas in the car. All of these things that require driving in and out of the driveway. And that will contribute to the traffic.
You can go ahead and finish up. Are you getting close?
Yeah, I'm getting close.
Okay, you can finish up.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think it's, I think what this project is, is it's shoehorning, you know, a franchise into a site that doesn't have the usable space or the width to really accommodate the needs of operating it in a way that doesn't present safety hazards. Thank you for hearing me out.
Just a quick question. Are you affiliated with Bob Smith BMW?
Oh, yes. I'm our general manager. I was our service manager for four years. I'm our general manager and one of the owners.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I don't have any other speaker cards. Before I close the public hearing, are there any other questions of the applicant team?
There might be. So can we...
I can close the public hearing and if it come...
Reopen it.
I can reopen it.
It'll be fine.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if we have further questions, comments, and I'm going to start down on this end this time. Commissioner Leah?
Yes. The MND is missing a critical page, page 78.
I hope you're going to say more. I hope you're going to say more.
I am.
I wasn't looking at page numbers when I was looking at this before. They're a There, some of them are out of order.
Out of order?
Out of order. Mine, some of my pages, they're here, although I don't see page 78. You're right. I wasn't looking at page numbers, but they're...
I'm returning in mine. 77, 72.
Yeah, it's the same. That's why I'm saying, that's why I said it's wonky. They're a little bit out of order. They're just...
Additionally...
So page 78 is missing.
Has the same error.
I'm sorry?
The thumb drive that they provided has the same error. This is important because I was trying to follow through in the analysis on transportation, and there's a big hole
Apologies for that, commissioners. We're looking into that right now, but it looks like it was omitted in the physical version. I'm not sure about the version on the flash drive, but it looks like you've already tried that.
Yes.
I believe in the version posted on our website that PDF should have it. We're checking which versions have it right now, but it looks like in the printed version, a couple pages are out of order or missing.
Yeah.
Okay, because the transportation is a major issue, and they've kind of glossed over the impacts. Calabasas Road is the other east-west connector in the city. We've had episodes where the freeway's been shut down. I'm concerned that what they're proposing here, what it, it's a disaster waiting to happen. And they need to address it.
Yeah, especially Kia.
And they need to provide those pages and have us be able to analyze it. I know Commissioner Hazania and I both come from the west side, and Laurel Road, and when you go out to Calabasas Road, was just gridlocked tonight. It normally is. We can't afford to have that access road hampered, and we need to know that it won't be. And we cannot, I cannot surmise that from what has been presented.
Well, I think staff is working on that right now. There is, there appears to be one page missing, and that's page 78.
Which they refer to, to go and look at it, 78 and 79, and that's where I was following the trail, and nothing there.
Let's, let's keep moving while they look to, to answer the questions about that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
We've been here since 6:00. Can we take a five-minute bio break, please? That might help them and it'll help me.
Absolutely not. There are no breaks in planning commission meetings. Yes, let's take a, five-minute breaks generally turn into 10.
Thank you very much.
So we're going to call it a 10-minute break, but let's keep it at 10 minutes, please.
That's all right.
Thank you. Commissioner Washburn, are you ready?
Chair Passver, may I just raise one issue as a point of information as we're talking about traffic, which is obviously of concern to the commission. Under CEQA now, congestion in and of itself in the form of an analysis through level of service is no longer a CEQA impact, but traffic safety is. So, just keep that in mind as we're having our discussion. I've heard both concerns about congestion, but traffic safety, but traffic safety is a CEQA concern. Congestion in and of itself is not.
It's not, so, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay.
Well, at the beginning of our discussion here tonight, I wanted to draw people's attention to R E N D dot one, which is in the packet that we have. And it's, it's basically an area view of, and it's angled area view of the autozone, or at least most of it physically. And the aerial shot that you had up that showed the central lane provision, what's in the packet is a little broader than that, but the one that you had up on the screen before we took our break, and it showed the center line and, and the central lane issues, and it showed the property across the street from the several dealerships, just, I forgot which one it was. It doesn't matter. The point being, I want to make the point that this is a very special place in the city of Calabasas. It's a source of significant employment, investment, and return on investment, as well as long-range planning. And we've been nibbling at the edges of the long-range planning in a way that the individual dealerships on, or in this auto overlay zone, and we've gone to great care, I think, to try to allow as much flexibility to promote the business development, but consistent with everything you've heard tonight, like oak-free preservation and environmental preservation and so forth. And things change. I mean, I've been at this since nineteen seventy-one, I mean nineteen ninety-one, actually before that, but still, you know, the, the actions that we've taken have consequences, and this is one of them. You know, we're duking it out over the shape of the building, or the, or the driveway, and the safety of the ins and outs of the driveways that are here, but I think everybody's done a fabulous job in trying to cope with everything. But one of the concerns I have is, how will this zone function over the next five to ten years? Because I want everybody that's proposing the dealerships that we have now and their futures to be successful way beyond my time in, on this body, or in the city for that matter. So, we've given a great care to that, and we've been very creative as a community, and I can thank all the dealers and all of their employees, for that matter, in making it probably one of the best dealer zones in the whole one-on-one corridor. And I think we're proud of that as a community in Calabasas. So, specifically, one of the things that has me concerned is that the property across the street, if you look at that, not this, but the previous totally vertical shot, looking at Calabasas Road, if you can go back to that slide. Keep going.
Which slide?
Well, it's not this one. You had one on the, on the screen that showed.
The frontage improvements?
Well, the Malamud property across the street. There we go. It's, it's kind of fogged in because we're focusing, obviously, on the Kia dealership proposal. But if you look at Calabasas Road, and you look at the, the little bit of the one-on-one freeway that we can see, which oftentimes is accommodating truck stops, as you've probably noticed, when you're going over either direction on the hill, the property that's directly across from this proposal is owned by a fellow named Malamud, who at one time many years ago proposed to put in a, you know, a custom car dealership, and clubhouse, and restaurant for clubby-type people, and Calabasas is full of that, because we have lots of folks who own really fantastic classic cars. And it was meant to be something, you know, quite special. And it was unique because it was using what is basically just a very poor storage lot component. If you look at the, this, from the word "Calabasas" in Calabasas Road, look to the north of Calabasas Road there, there is basically a blank space. It's just dirt right now. And then there's, there are a few cars that are stored on the lot that is paved, but that property, we have reserved, I'm guessing, for something because Mr. Malamud owns the property, and he leases out the space for storage of vehicles and parked cars and so forth. So, it's not our project tonight, but it, but it's, it's part of the problem that we're facing, because everything that we're talking about has to do with Calabasas Road and the use of Calabasas Road as a place for delivery and, and sales and services of vehicles. And everything on the south side of Calabasas Road is very professionally managed and taken care of. But our problem is, what do we do to turn trucks around? Do we build a, a roundabout at the corner of Moro Road where it runs into Calabasas Road? And right now, it's inadequate, in my opinion, to deal with the future of this whole zone, and that's why our staff, in fact, has talked about the potential of, you know, digging into the hillside to the south of Moro Road Bridge in order to build a very substantial roundabout, which is not a bad idea, but there's a lot of folks who get confused, and they probably will fight us on the whole thing along the way as well. But that's on the very western end of what is kind of the autozone of Calabasas Road from Parkway Calabasas to the Moro Bridge. The Moro Bridge is.
It looks like Parkway is about three hundred seventy-eight miles away by.
Go away. They'll watch us spy on us, don't they? So, one of the concerns I have, and to be specific, is can we figure out a way to reconfigure the issues that we're talking about as our largely public safety and traffic management and successful car dealerships by adjusting the larger picture of Calabasas Road from Parkway Calabasas to really the end of Calabasas Road at the open space that is, and we have a plan for that. That's part of the master plan that our staff has referred to lightly, and Curtis probably can tell you what's happening with the entire stretch from there, all the way to the end of Calabasas Road, which ends at the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy property. So, the reason I'm saying all of this stuff is that the picture is bigger than just a driveway or the oak trees. Preservation of oak trees is important. That was our second ordinance in the city of Calabasas in nineteen ninety-one, and senior corridors were the first. So, i-if we're dealing with the lives and fortunes of people like the Kia dealership, you know, proponents, and the people who are running successful dealerships on the south side of Calabasas Road, I think there needs to be a little more consideration given to the areas that are outside of the envelope of this ten acres that we're talking about today.
Okay. Well, very commendable and, and good idea. Unfortunately, as you know, that's really not what is before us tonight. What's before us tonight is this Kia dealership, and I, I think that their dedication of the twenty feet to the city, the twenty-foot width to the city, is an excellent concession and helps to some extent, but in terms of any larger issues within the city, it's not really something that we can address tonight. We can certainly talk to staff about.
Well, it is possible. I'll tell you how it's possible to address.
Okay.
And a condition could be put on whatever the ultimate approval or revisions might be necessary for approval, because I'm for it personally, but we can add, add a condition that everybody has to participate in the redevelopment of the territory from Parkway Calabasas to the end of Calabasas Road in the west, because our future depends upon it, and the success of the dealerships, they test their cars up and down that road.
Well, but the condition.
And they go through a roundabout, and right now, they don't. They go through the.
But when you say place a condition, the only condition would be placed on the Kia dealership, not the rest of the dealerships. We don't have that, we don't have that right or power at the moment.
Well, I understand that as well, but at the point that we're having a discussion about either approval of this project tonight and sending it on with a recommendation for approval or denial to the council, it might in fact literally get down to that level.
If I may offer some advice, suggestion.
I wish you would, please.
Or opinions on this. We, I actually very much agree. So, we, we don't want to look at this project in a vacuum, and part of the review process, including sending this to our development review committee and having it reviewed by Public Works, is to look at the long-term use of Calabasas Road. And as this commission is aware, we have several different documents relevant to that beyond just the municipal code, one of them being the West Calabasas Road Design Guidelines. So, that kind of spells out the long-term vision of Calabasas Road, and we, I believe, we're all in agreement that there are improvements that need to be made, and Public Works has been working on designing those improvements. Not all of them have been fully funded, so they'll continue to seek funds for that. But if you look at Calabasas Road, improvements have been made incrementally with projects. And so, with the Cadillac project, with Audi, with BMW, all of those have made improvements to the right-of-way, both in the form of dedications, but also street frontage improvements that were paid by those developments. So, again, this project is tied into that. It's actually one of the reasons why the driveway location is where it is, because that's how Public Works is trying to manage Calabasas Road and movement up and down, or west and east along Calabasas Road. So, they're looking at all of that, and that's why this is moved through the process the way that it has. And this project will take what is currently a vacant site and kind of a bump-out into the street right now, and include that dedication to the city with the improvements made by the applicant. So, a hundred and seventy feet of Calabasas Road will get improved with new sidewalk and landscaping, and so that.
And, and bike lane?
And the, yes.
And bike lane?
And turning movements along Calabasas Road. So, they're also going to fund and, and pay to have the restriping done necessary. So, all of this is tied into the overall larger concept. Down the road, we'll keep working on that with Public Works, and they'll continue to look at future improvements that they can make. There are other options out there, because I wouldn't want to just condition this one project to be responsible for all improvements along Calabasas Road, but there are.
Michael, that's not my recommendation here. I'm saying that we, as a body, need to be planning in addition to just judicially approving a project that meets all the conditions that you have very thoroughly presented, and they've very thoroughly met, in my opinion. But at this point, I don't even know who owns the property next door. And I understand that there are utilities, like Las Vergenes Municipal Water District has facilities on the north side of Calabasas Road.
Yeah. And high-power voltage, high-voltage power lines on the north side, too, that make it difficult to adjust as well.
Well, and that's also our water supply, because, you know, that's where water is literally pumped into the community, which goes to the Las Vergenes Reservoir in Westlake Village ultimately. So, I mean, it's all connected, even though at this point, we're specifically required to deal only with the impacts of this particular proposal. I understand it. But the, the, we could get real strict and say, we can't afford to threaten the water or power supply of the community, or we can't afford to threaten the public safety of the turn movements that are going to be initiated by one dealership, even though every dealership on the road has, has a, both a, a benefit to come from our city planning, and also a longer-range view in order to make sure that we are not leaving something off of the table that we say, oh, my God, we can't just make a, a hard right onto Moro Bridge. We have to dig into the hillside and build a, either a four-way stop, or we have to build into the hillside and do a lot of grading up there, and the city has to invest in that. And at one point, there was, there was a planned budget to deal with that road improvement from Parkway Calabasas all, all the way to the end of Calabasas Road, and if that's going by the wayside, that's a mistake that we've made, and it shouldn't penalize this dealer.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it, and something to consider moving forward. I, I'm not going to pass you by, but I, I do want to make one comment. I think that, that there are improvements that are a part of the package with this particular project, and I think that they are quite beneficial, and it will be nice to have a dealership where the truck dropping off the cars isn't in the middle of the road, because accommodation has been made, and it'll be nice to have sidewalk where people are not walking in the dirt, to, to walk along there between the different dealerships, because people do that. Anyway, I'm sorry.
Let me just add, if I can just add to that. If we, if we know that there will not be a currently viable project on the Malamud
we don't know what's going to happen and what they might bring forth with regard to the property across the street. And conditioning anything on what might happen across the street...
That's going to be up to the city council, anyway. I understand.
Of course, of course. Okay, let's let Commissioner Housena.
Very briefly, I chatted with staff during our little hiatus. And I just wanted to confirm on the record that the other dealerships, when they were being approved long before I was part of this commission, had to remove some oak trees.
I can confirm that correct.
Okay. I just wanted to put that out there, since there are a few oak trees that will be removed if we approve this project. Other than that, I did just want to mention, I think in terms of volume of cars coming in and out of Kia versus BMW... I mean, my dad has been in the automotive industry my whole life. He actually worked for Mercedes, Calabasas. So, I'm just aware somewhat that BMW sales really do outweigh Kia sales, if I'm not mistaken, especially in California. So, I don't know if the volume is as big of a concern as maybe we're thinking it might be. The dealership is much smaller relative to BMW and Mercedes and even Cadillac. But I just wanted to throw that out there.
All right. Thank you. Who wants to go first? Okay.
This is just comments?
This is comments? Or we are comments or a motion?
Oh, okay. So, my comments, first of all, I love the old topographic maps. I was a geography major, so that was, that's great. Looking at the historical maps was amazing, and you should keep that. But I am very concerned about the wording of the signage, and it seems to be total resistance by the applicant. I don't think that's helpful to their dealership. I'm worried about, I'm concerned about the angled corner, which you can't see in Slide 18. But when you go out there and look at the poles, you know, the sign poles, it's very clear. It's very angled, and it's very uncomfortable, that corner. I'm also very concerned about the driveway. I look at, I'm looking at a two-way driveway. And I have a Subaru, right? So, I go to the one in Van Nuys, and there's like 10 lanes. And/or I go to the one in Thousand Oaks, same thing. And my son has a Nissan, and I take that in. And it's also got like multiple lanes. This has two. This is not adequate for a Kia dealership. This might be good for a Rolls-Royce dealership, a Bentley dealership, an electric car dealership, as Commissioner Stein mentioned. Or just a low-volume dealership, Aston Martin or something like that. It's not acceptable for a Kia dealership. This is dangerous. And it's just not, it's not enough lanes. It's not wide enough. And it's not even close, okay? It's just totally inadequate. And it's the wrong kind of... Anyway, so I'm very concerned about that. It's completely unsafe. I'm concerned about the loading, totally unsafe. I'm concerned about the parking. I mean, haven't any of us been on that road at 4:00 or 5:00 in the afternoon? It's packed. So, imagine a high-volume dealership like this with cars, people coming to pick up their cars between 4:00 and 6:00, according to Mr. Schmidt. They're not going to be able to do it. It's just impossible. We're creating a nuisance for us, for the entire city. So, I'm just very concerned about all that. I don't even see how this passes an MND, let alone goes further to the council. Those are my thoughts, anyway.
All right. Thank you. I will weigh in briefly. I don't share Commissioner Harrison's concerns. As far as the sign, the content of the sign is not something that we can control. It's not something we should even be discussing. As far as ingress and egress, you know, I've spent plenty of time at dealerships, at their service departments and their sales departments. And the kind of volume that everybody's talking about at one time during the day, I don't see it. And I like the fact that they have accommodation for, I think it was 12 cars in the service area at one time. And there are people who come and take the cars and move them. And I've been at the Mercedes service. I've been at BMW service many, many times over the years. And if they can't keep volume of cars that are sitting there waiting to be, waiting for intake at under 12, that's a problem. And it's a problem that I have, at least personally, have never experienced, even with very high-volume service departments. I just... Again, the traffic, yeah, the traffic exists. It exists now. The impact that this dealership will have on that traffic is not significant enough. That's why we have the MND. That's why the studies have been done. And again, we're not talking about traffic itself. We're talking about safety. And I see nothing here that causes me the kind of concern to deny this, well, to recommend disapproval of this project. I think that, I think the project meets the requirements under our code, under SEQA. And I think it will be a great addition to our community in an area that is dedicated to auto dealerships. What is on this lot right now is incredibly unsightly, has been for many years now. And I think it's time to put something that looks pretty attractive to me on that site. And I see no shortfalls under our code that would warrant recommending disapproval. So, those are my thoughts. Do we have a motion, one way or the other?
I mean, I would move to disapprove the MND, because I think it is unsafe. And I'd move to deny, to deny the project or recommend denial of the project, because we can only recommend, right?
We can only recommend.
To the planning, to the city council.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of...
May we discuss the motion?
You want to discuss? Yep, absolutely.
I can't support the motion. And I agree with what you described. And despite the fact that I took us a little abroad from the specifics of this, about all that can be done has been done in dealing with the insertion of a potentially very successful dealership in our community. And I would support a different kind of a motion. I can't support this motion.
All right. Any further discussion?
Yeah, a couple of things I forgot to mention, because I looked it up. Kia sells more than twice as many cars as Subaru. So, this is a very high-volume operation, not a low volume like all the other dealers on that street. And as far as the colors, I know some people are concerned, a couple of other commissions are concerned about the colors, current colors. Obviously, times change. And one suggestion I would have is, instead of the black on the gray, change the black to gray and change the building to white. I think it would lighten it up and not look so, you know, prominent. Let's put it that way. Especially with that western end sticking out. Again, it's going to be very uncomfortable looking at that corner. Anyway, that's all. I just wanted to point that out.
All right. Commissioner Leah, you had a comment?
Yes, I disagree with Commissioner Washburn that everything that can be done was done. I think the project could be re-engineered, possibly considering the alternate driveway. But the way it is configured now, it is a disaster waiting to happen.
Okay. Thank you. And just to comment on moving the driveway, I think that the alternate driveway is... Creates more problem than it solves. It moves it nine feet further from the BMW dealership. But it takes away the loading zone. It takes away nine feet of the loading zone. It take, you lose a parking space. And I don't see the benefit of that. I think safety-wise, the closer cars are driveway-wise, if they're both coming out at the same time, better chance they're going to see each other. So, in any case, all right. If there's no further discussion...
Chair Washburn, just one recommendation. Could we do a roll call vote, just for purposes of clarity of the vote?
Sure.
Did she say, did he say Chair Wash?
Yeah, yeah. That's okay.
Okay.
He was at one point.
Okay.
A few years ago. All right. Commissioner Leah.
You want to nay?
Yeah, it is the motion that you seconded.
Yes. I'm supporting the motion.
To deny, yeah.
So, that's an "aye." Okay, Commissioner Washburn?
I'm opposed to the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Housena?
Unfortunately, I am opposed to the motion, too.
I am opposed to the motion.
And I'm in favor of the motion.
Okay. The motion fails. Two, four, and three against. Is there an alternate motion?
I'm going to ask for help from our attorney, because I would move that we make a recommendation for consideration and approval by the council, given all the things that have been raised by our staff, by the people who have testified here today, and by several of us, as well as commissioners. And I don't know if that's possible. What do you think?
If I may? How about a motion recommending approval to the city council with the strong request of the council that they view this meeting and consider the discussion... They're going to get the same testimony, but that they consider the discussion among the commissioners. Would that do it?
That would help me. But we have experience in dealing with some of the apartment building promotions or proposals that we've, as a planning commission, forwarded. And I'm concerned that the import of what we discussed today, particularly in my case, the big picture and the unanswered questions about what the city and the dealerships can do together to make sure that this AutoZone works for a long, long time. That's my concern. It's not enough to say that we should recommend denial, because I think that they've done the best job that we've asked them to do.
But we, I think that my suggestion is all we can do to try to get council to view the meeting and the discussion among the...
No, I'm okay with that.
But we can't force them to.
If that's as strong, Mr. Attorney, as we can make that recommendation that we look at the city responsibility in addition to the dealership recommendations that we've had. Because they're intertwined. That's my whole problem with this.
From what I've heard, Commissioner Washburn, is your concern is that there needs to be more of a global or holistic approach to the build-out of this zone, right?
Correct. It shouldn't be ruled just by the length of the loading, offloading zone that they're willing to provide for the, you know, the sidewalk improvements and the space for a truck to unload. Because as we heard from the testimony of our applicants, you know, they can do off-site things that would prevent the difficulties. But those are all Band-Aids when it comes to the functioning of the entire AutoZone, which is special in Calabasas. So, I don't know how to say any better than that.
I can maybe provide a suggestion. The matter at hand is the project, right? So, we need to, the request from the commission is direction on what to bring back to the next meeting. Is it going to be a resolution recommending approval to council or a resolution recommending denial? From there, we're going to have a staff report that will be prepared and provided to the council. And in that staff report, we can make it clear that the commission requests that the council review this meeting and understand the larger global issues along Calabasas Road and be supportive of future projects or support of future city projects.
I would make a motion to that effect. But I would like you to be, or our attorney and you, to tell us what that will look like going to the council if we say we recommend developing a resolution of approval, knowing that it will come back to us after everything has been basically included in all this discussion. I mean, this has been a very educational session for everybody.
The resolution that would come back to this commission would be specific to this project, because it would have to make findings specific only to this project. But the staff report going on to council can, again, make that recommendation that the council review this meeting.
Let me make a suggestion that might satisfy...
If you're promised to do that, I'll make that motion.
Well, I tell you what. I think we can do a little better.
All right.
That would be the motion, which would be a recommendation of approval. When that comes back to us at our next meeting, can you include the verbiage that you propose? Not the entire staff report, but the verbiage that you intend to include that addresses Commissioner Washburn's global concern, so that we can see that language? We wouldn't be approving that, per se, but so that we can see that as a reference before we actually sign off on the resolution.
Right.
Is that doable?
Yeah, because we'll have a brief staff report coming back to the planning commission that says at the previous meeting, staff is directed to provide the following resolution. So, we can include some language in there that we would add to our staff report to city council.
Well, let me suggest another, or an additional item. And that would be, don't put it on the consent agenda. Put it on the main agenda.
You can put it on the consent agenda, and we'll remove it.
I know you can pull it, but that deflates the purpose of what we're talking about. So, let's just put it on the agenda. No big deal.
Well, we'll confirm with the city attorney. It probably can be new business. It cannot be a public hearing item, just because...
No, I understand.
It can be re-noticed, but we'll confirm.
It's just to make sure that it's an important item of business as opposed to a consent thing, which could, along with a minutes, just, you know, sail through. And it's too important.
We'll make sure to remove it and have it as a separately discussed item.
Why does it need to be on the consent agenda?
Well, they've had some marching orders that... Let's leave it to staff. If they can keep it, if you can agendize it as a separate item that does not, is not accompanied by a public hearing, please do that. If you can't, put it in consent, and we will remove it. Fair enough?
That's fair with me. So, I make the motion simply stated that we recommend a resolution of approval with everything that the Director of Planning and Development has indicated.
Okay.
And to be clear, also approval of the MND.
And, well, yes. And, well, I, it, yes, that impro- that includes approval of the MND, correct? In your motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, all of the accompanying, all of the accompanying, uh, items, uh, we have mult- we don't have to call them all out, do we? Do we have to call them all out? It's approval of the file, which includes approval of the MND and all of the different elements, the site plan review, the oak tree permit, the lot merger, et cetera, et cetera.
The six filed application permits, yes.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that. And having seconded that, I want to acknowledge Commissioner Harrison's concerns. Yes, volume, of course, could lead, could lead to safety issues. Again, I think that this area has more BMWs and Mercedes, but that's, that's neither here nor there. We can't sit around and wait for these other car manufacturers to come and propose plans, whether it's, you know, Aston Martin or, or Bentley. I mean, this is, this is what we have before us. It appears to be compliant, I, I don't know if I can find a finding otherwise.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Uh, all in favor of the motion as proposed? Uh, oh, do we want it, do we want a roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay, Commissioner Leah?
Aye.
Commissioner Washburn?
Aye.
Commissioner Hozina?
Aye.
Aye? Commissioner Harrison?
Opposed.
Opposed, all right. Uh, passes three, two. So you know, you know how this comes back? This comes back with the, uh, with, with the resolution, um, as well as the language, at least that addresses, at least that addresses Commissioner Washburn's concerns, um, so that we know what's going to, how it's going to go.
Yeah, language that will be included in the staff report to city council.
Yeah, perfect.
Among other things, there will be other stuff in the staff report, but we'll make sure that we incorporate the language that we bring back here.
All right, thank you. And, uh, perhaps the applicant, uh, if you followed what happened, terrific. If not, feel free to talk to staff and they'll explain. Um, but, uh, this will come back to us at our next meeting as a resolution recommending approval to the city council, so, uh, and at that meeting, it, it becomes official if, if it is, if it is approved again. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Um, director's report, I think, yes?
So our next meeting is May fifteenth and at that meeting, we'll have resolutions from these two projects back on the agenda for the commission to formally adopt. Uh, after that, we're looking at a couple of different items coming to the commission in June. That includes the lead ordinance, so the green building ordinance that was discussed a couple months ago, as well as the capital improvements project review. Um, that will be, that's the, the annual requirement that the planning commission must review the CIP project for the next fiscal year and make a determination consistency with the general plan. And then following that, uh, in a little, either later in June or early July, we'll have, uh, annual progress report on the general plan for the commission's review. That's all I have, I don't have any other public hearing items. I do want to remind the commission that council is dark in July. Council is also looking at their budget, so we're in budget season right now and I believe that the budget, the adoption of the budget is scheduled for June eleventh, so keep your eye on that if you're interested in the city's finances. Um, and then in the next couple council meetings, they are going, they're looking at adopting an ordinance that would add a student commissioner to the planning commission. So all the other commissions have student commissioners, non-voting, but it, the commission, the student commissioner would sit up on the dais and participate in the conversation just like the alternate.
You mean, we're going to have to sit closer to each other?
We'll move, uh, John down here. Uh, but that would, so that would align the planning commission with the other commissions and give the commission a, a formal student commissioner. Um, I also want to let the commission know that we have officially kicked off on the objective design standards, which was discussed last year and we developed an RFP based on the feedback from the planning commission. We've executed that contract and have moved forward. Uh, with that, I sent out an email that we are going to have a different community engagement opportunities. There's going to be a survey in the coming month on, uh, feedback from the community as well as upcoming workshops. One of them will be a joint workshop with the planning commission and the architectural review panel. So we've got that working. And then finally, our, um, pre-approved ADU plans, which at the recommendation of the planning commission, we went to Agora and got those, uh, working through their consultant. Those are ready to be posted, just going through some final formalities, legal formalities, and as soon as we get through that, they should be on the website and available for residents to be able to use.
Great.
Michael, uh, can you tell us what the, what the contract is for the objective standards?
The objective design standards is-
Now, I mean, what's the, what's the amount of money?
Oh, it was, uh, I want to say the contract, the proposal was around a hundred and twenty-five thousand. The contract amount is around a hundred and forty thousand, building in contingencies for, you know, an extra meeting or additional stakeholder workshops.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, any reports from commissioners? No? No?
I have one. Give it. Uh, the reason that I've been so, I guess, stubborn tonight is because, if you don't know this, Topanga Canyon is not functioning and is likely not to function, Topanga Canyon Boulevard. So all the traffic that comes from the west side when PCH is reopened on a regular basis, because it's not now, you see signage daily on the freeway saying, "Take Lost Virginus and then hope we can get onto PCH." So Topanga Canyon Boulevard is going, uh, going to undertake a massive change. It's going to be a big project by Caltrans and the county and the state park system, so-
Do they have any kind of estimate of-
None.
-time? None?
None. And I've been involved with the potential to restore the Topanga Lagoon and build a bridge over PCH, I mean, over the Topanga Creek before the Palisades and the Malibu fire. And that was going to be budgeted somewhere between twelve million for design and maybe thirty or forty million dollars for construction. That's all in a cocked hat right now. And all that traffic and all those impacts come through our town and we're taking all the debris from the Malibu Palisades fire and some of the other stuff too, you don't even know that, but there, we had to pass an ordinance in the city to, to put signage up to prevent the dump trucks, some of which are like five hundred loads a day, from parking on our city streets lined up to get there when the landfill, and it's not the Calabasas landfill, folks, it's the Lost Hills landfill, aptly named. And that's going to be very difficult to deal with and the, the concerns of our citizens is huge, if you haven't been paying attention. So that's going to affect our planning efforts and it's going to affect decisions, including how we manage the traffic on Marrow Road, the bridge, Calabasas Road and all through Calabasas. And they're coming over Mulholland Highway, they're coming over, uh, there's some traffic actually coming around the loop from Topanga Canyon to Old Canyon, so they can get through Calabasas. And they come up from the Payuma Road and Lost Virginus and Mulholland Highway, where King Gillette Ranch is. And they're coming, you know, by, right by Viewpoint and Calabasas High School, usually at the time when those schools are getting in and out in the morning and the afternoon. It's really a major problem. So I'm hoping that will prevail upon our council members and our staff to address what's happening and what will happen, just like we talked about tonight, what's happening and what will happen to Calabasas Road.
Thank you. Commissioner Leah, anything? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second? Hearing no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.